I now call to order the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting time being six thirty-two P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mister clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Mayor Portim McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Are there any conflicts of interest tonight with the agenda?
No.
All right. So next we will proceed to public comment. Members of public wishing provide public comment, please sign in the sheet. Um, behind the podium, state your name clearly into the microphone, and each speaker will be given three minutes um to further comments.
Good evening, mayor, trustees, city or town staff. Uh, Lisa Cholay, seventy-four, twenty-four, Homestretch Drive. Um, I'm actually here in my capacity as the chair and executive director for Safe Route School of Wellington. Um, and I wanted to just share an update with you. As you know, we've applied for two different grants. Uh, the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant, which we won't know until the beginning of February. That's a really long, long time for them to make a decision. Um, but we also applied for the Safe Routes to Parks Grant, um, which I think the last time I was here, you guys gave me the letter of support for Safe Routes to School for our application. And last week, and this is a public announcement, but not official of announcement yet, but last week we were informed that we were one of four communities that received that grant. So that is technical grant that will run from January to September. And then uh, ten thousand dollars that can be used either for purposes of outreach or whatever, or set aside um, for the Safe Streets for All Grant Matching Funds, which is the intention of Safe Routes to School. So I will be back about that grant, which we will need to partner with you guys. But this is a huge, huge first step, and it will help us develop a methodology for prioritization of infrastructure improvements. And it will um, set us up for success when we apply for the Safe Streets for All Grant, which if you recall, I shared with you has been fully funded to everybody that's applied. So this is a huge opportunity for Wellington to get a plan and get on the right path, and I'm looking forward to working with uh, Mr. Bird and uh, members of the Public Works Department to start moving some of this stuff forward in a way that's helpful for everyone. So just wanted to share the good news with you, and thank you for your support on that.
Awesome news. Thank you. All right. Next we'll have a presentation from Ms. Garcia regarding the town's contract with Baker Tilly. Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. The Board of Trustees approved a letter of engagement with Baker Tilly in July twenty twenty-three for Financial Management Services. Since that time, Mr. Rhodes started with Wellington in August and has brought consistency and reliability to the town's financial processes and reports. The letter of engagement concludes December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Staff is requesting an extension with Baker Tilly to continue the support from Mr. Rhodes for January through June of twenty twenty-four. I anticipate having Mr. Rhodes work approximately twenty hours per week and continue to oversee financials and financial reporting, review and create financial policies, and generate a five-year general fund financial projection, along with assisting with a finance director recruitment. The draft twenty twenty-four budget includes ninety thousand dollars for for professional services in the Finance Department budget. Baker Tilly has offered an amended contract for the timeframe requested and is willing to honor the twenty twenty-three hourly rate. The work that Mr. Rhodes has accomplished in the short time he has been with Wellington is tremendous, and I believe his support during the finance director recruitment process will be invaluable. The recruitment process will be conducted in-house and will begin shortly after the first of the year. If the Board of Trustees wishes to retain Mr. Rhodes for another six months, a resolution approving the change order will be placed on the January nine, twenty twenty-four agenda. So it's brought to you as a presentation because that's what I told you I would bring um, at the end of the end of the contract to give a status update how we're doing and let the Board of Trustees make a decision if we want to wanted to move forward with an additional um amendment to the contract. So I stand for any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Garcia. Trustee Mason.
Uh, I don't have any questions on this. Uh, Mr. Rhodes has done an absolutely fabulous job the entire time he's been here. Uh, I I think quite frankly, we really wish that he could just stay on as our finance director. That that would be ideal, but uh, we know, we know that's not possible. So uh, uh, do look forward to having Mr. Rhodes participate in the recruitment process and uh, I think this is going to only bring good things for the town, so.
Uh, trustee Daly.
Agreed as well. That that sounds like a great plan. Thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Gator.
I'd um, share with trustee Mason and trustee Daly. I think Mr. Rhodes has done a fantastic job for the town, has helped to bring a lot of clarity, especially with the where we're at in finances to help see where we're going, so we can start to make decisions regarding that. So I think having him on to help recruit and then train up a new finance director is a great thing, and I think it'd even be wise just to continue in some kind of consultant consultation or is keeping him on retainer for future as well as we get a new person up to speed. So very supportive.
Trustee Teets.
I am also supportive of this idea. My question comes is the contract ends the thirty-first, but we won't see that other contract come till January twenty-ninth. Will we have any finance director position during that lag?
Sure. It's so to be, it'll come back to you January ninth, and so that'll be really um, and Mr. Rhodes will be actually on vacation from before Christmas until about that time. So we wouldn't be using him during that time anyway. So the timeframes worked out really well.
Perfect. I apologize. I thought I heard the twenty-ninth of January, so I was.
I apologize. Yes, January ninth.
Okay. Um, so and then I'm very grateful that they chose to honor the twenty twenty-three financial contract and because I know that they could have raised that up. They chose to, so I'm grateful. Thank you.
Trustee Wigan.
I'm in complete agreement and being able to have him helping us recruit our new person is going to be invaluable. So appreciate what he's doing.
Thank you. Mayor Portim. Perfect. Yeah, I think Mr. Rhodes has done a phenomenal job. So thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and um, doing all that you have done for us and will continue to do for us. Well, hopefully we agree. Um, yeah, so bring it back.
I have directions. It will be on the consent agenda on January ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not leaving yet.
Yeah. All right. Next, Ms. Garcia will give a presentation on the finance director slash treasurer item. Ms. Garcia.
Thank you. At the November twenty-eighth Board of Trustee meeting in preparation of the recruitment for the Finance Director Treasurer position, it was requested that staff provide some information regarding the separation of the two positions. The Finance Director is currently a full-time exempt employee. The Wellington Municipal Code outlines the duties of the Treasurer, which includes payment of invoices, tracking of payments, and assuring they are charged to the correct general ledger accounts, creating a report of all transactions after March one of each year, and solicit bids for the annual audit along with duties as assigned as required by law or required by law. The Finance Director job description was included in the packet. The summary of responsibilities are, under the direction of the Town Administrator, performs management and technical duties as the as the town's Director of Finance, with responsibility for directing the town's financial operations and safeguarding the assets, manage the annual audit, budget development, financial statement preparation and reporting, and assures compliance with state and federal regulations, town policies and procedures. The Director is also appointed by the Board of by the Board of Trustees as the Town Treasurer. In December of twenty twenty-one, CML did a search of their database for statutory municipalities that had both a Finance Director and a Treasurer. The town of Colbran was the only statutory town that fit the search. Their Town Administrator wears a lot of hats, being a small municipality. She is also their Town Clerk, the Town Treasurer, and the Public Information Officer. They also have an appointed Finance Director. The cities of Leadville and Salida are the two statutory cities that have elected Treasurers and appointed Finance Directors. The Wellington Finance Director Treasurer has a salary range of one hundred, one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred dollars to one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Based on information submitted to the Colorado Municipal League for Municipalities of Like Size and Budget, the average twenty twenty-three salary for a Finance Director was one hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. Don Rhodes has extensive experience related to go to local government finance, so I asked his thoughts on the separation of duties. He advised that success for Wellington could include a Finance Director, an Assistant, or Deputy Finance Director or Finance Manager. The Finance Director would review financial reports and general ledger data being generated by the number two in finance and perform long-term financial planning and visioning for the municipality. If the Board of Trustees is interested in pursuing the separation of the positions, staff will work on a treasurer job description and salary range for trustee review. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if there's additional information you would like for me to gather, I can, I'm happy to do that for you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Uh, trustee Gator.
So thank you very much for the work that you did on this. Um, so and thank you to the board for having the conversation. I appreciate that. Um, so I know this is something that I've brought up a few times in the past, and I think there's multiple sides to that, and I know um, Salida has a slightly different take on it. They instead of hiring a full-time additional person to do that, they have a separate elected official, right? They're elected, they have no voting, but they still attend meetings. And I really appreciate as you kind of, if you had a chance, I know Patty included in the packet the link to their information. What they did, because the Treasurer by Colorado State statute has to have like all the responsibilities of checks and everything like that. But in Salida, what they did is in their code is they actually said that they can accomplish this by working with the town administrator to have the city staff do that. So their Treasurer doesn't actually go through and do all the day-to-day, but they are ultimately the one that was responsible for that. And then they are constantly looking at that, and then they actually are an elected official, sit with the Board of Trustees, they're at all the meetings, and they're kind of bringing back information to the board about relevant financial decisions. Um, so they're kind of coming at the board and saying, hey, here's some things that here's how the state of our finances might reflect on to this decision that you're considering. So even though the Treasurer is not voting on that, they'll be able to share that input to that. And then they separately have the city staff that kind of actually runs the day-to-day, and then the Treasurer position just kind of looks over things and kind of reports back. And then they also serve as the liaison to their finance committee. So their um, actual yeah, Treasurer position is the one that sits on their finance committee, and they're kind of the liaison for that board. Um, that is kind of what I look at it is not hiring another full-time position, but there's two pieces to that. Number one, that does um, free up, we can free up some of the time on one side or the other, where the person who's actually kind of doing the day-to-day things doesn't have to also be trying to report out on everything. But number two is it also has that separation. So even if it's just innocent things such as, hey, we accidentally miscategorize something, or we put something there, it doesn't have to be a sinister mistake, but when you have the same person who's building the reports, doing the work, is also reviewing the report and then reporting out on it, you don't have multiple sets of eyes looking at things. And so I think that there's a lot of value in having that separation where you've got someone who's going through, doing the work, but then you also have someone else who's checking in on that, and more so than just our finance committee is great that they can look at the reports when that's done, but they're not there actually looking at the data on a consistent basis, right? They're looking at it once a month as it's presented to them. Um, versus having somebody whose job is in a small portion to actually sit and dig through things, make sure they understand things, and then look at that with the eye towards how can this be beneficial to the future of the town? And then bringing that to us as the board, I think would be really valuable to have that input. And I feel like we haven't had that in the past. And again, it's not a slight on any of our, I just, there's not time, right? They've been trying to just get the finances figured out. There's no time for them to be looking at the big picture and then bringing us information on that to say, hey, here's some things that maybe you guys should consider in your decision-making. So I would prefer that over going like two separate full-time positions. I don't want to make it like a two separate full-time positions. Um, Mr. Rhodes' idea of having an assistant might help some on the separation of duties in terms of making things easier, but then you still would, you wouldn't have that separation of responsibilities, I think that's important, because when you right, because with Salida, the finance staff all reports to the Town Administrator, and that's how it should be, right? Because we don't make decisions on terms of, okay, pay this check or pay this vendor, things like that. We don't need oversight over what check is being paid by who. But we do have the ultimate oversight of, okay, how are the finances going? Which is, that's the Treasurer's job, right? They really should be looking at, okay, what's the overall health or things going well, not, okay, this, this, and that, you're paying this person. That's really the that falls to me, that falls under the Town Administrator. So you have the person who's doing that reports to Town Administrator. And then you have the person that's kind of looking at the overall, here's how it's all going, then reports to the Board of Trustees. So you kind of have that separation there. So that would be my thought. And I, again, I like what Salida did in saying that basically they take out, because again, under Colorado State statute, all the other stuff, that's statutory, right, of the paying bills, but what they did is they put in their town code, they can accomplish those duties through this city staff, which then reports to Town Administrator, which would be how I'd recommend doing it. I would not recommend that that Treasurer position would be the one doing the checks and everything else. That should all stay with us. So those are kind of my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
I really like that idea. I like having the generalized idea that it's, one, an elected position, two, the fact that we can keep the costs lower. If someone knows what they're going to be getting paid going into it, they know they're running for a civil service situation, not a full-time paycheck. Um, I like the fact that they are the board liaison to the Finance Committee, so we don't have, no offense, trustee Gator, but we have that separation to go attend, have them attend the meetings and come back with educated, educated basis on finances going forward. Um, so I do, I do like that generalized idea, and I would support that if that's something that our board if our board also supported.
Thank you.
I agree with what has just been said. I think uh, if we agree on that, I think that would be a good uh, process to go. Again, having that separation, I think would be very uh, bring some clarity to everything.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Um, yeah, I did actually have an opportunity to speak to an esteemed colleague about some of the stuff. He was formerly at City of Loveland doing uh, finance over there and is currently with Loveland Fire Authority. Um, I I think when we're looking at a Finance Director, really what we want is a qualified candidate, and unfortunately, I think up to this point, we've we've, we've had some kind of missteps in that regard. Uh, this particular board has taken a tremendous number of steps in order to bring oversight to our finances, including the appointment of the Finance Committee. Now, uh, we're already looking at a salary range of one oh three, seven hundred to one fifty-five, five hundred for a Finance Director, which is already lower than the CML twenty twenty-three salary average. I guess what I would say is rather than a position being opened, I would like to see a very qualified candidate step in the door that is able to do not only our uh, assist with our auditing and those processes, but also be to be able to uh, do some of our project, projection going forward. So I if if we're looking at adding a position, and I think especially with a few of the things that this board has discussed uh, in weeks prior, such as merit and cola and these types of things, I would not be in support of adding another position. Like I said, I think we've already got some oversight there with the Finance Committee. And I think that if we were willing to pay a Finance Director that is actually qualified to do the job, uh, that would be much more beneficial in this regard.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Hi, I uh, agree with trustee Mason in the sense of that we have already provided a lot of accountability with the Finance Committee. And those are citizens with varying backgrounds. We happen to have a lot of finance background in that currently, but it is open and welcome to anybody who has good questions about finance or is interested in how the town spends its money uh, and that accountability. That's many people who are doing the work that I'm hearing from other trustees that they think is lacking, and those are citizens. Those are volunteers who uh, want to participate, and I think that's awesome. Um, I did hear a little conflict in some of the responses I heard. Um, the idea that the Treasurer has a different function is the Finance Director. Yet, it was also mentioned that the Finance Committee also only gets information once a month. So what I'm hearing, though, is that the Treasurer does need to be engaged. The Treasurer does need to know what's happening from a day-to-day. They need to be knowledgeable and know exactly what's happening with the finances of the town. It can't be an elected person who gets updates occasionally. I really need somebody ingrained in business. Um, so in that sense, if we don't think that a Finance Director can serve as both functions, I think money would be better spent uh, hiring a supportive position for our Finance Department for the town. Um, also, I heard the word elections repeatedly. Elections are political. I don't think we should bring politics into our finances. Um, politics have no business in making sure um, of the accountability. That's politics. Uh, and not only that, but there's been a lot of discussions about the cost of elections. If we're putting another ballot measure onto, oh, if we're putting in another item, um, it's going to increase our cost for elections for um, those those ballots that we're doing with Laramo County, for example, or with the state. So if we have more items, it costs us more to participate. So if we're worried about costs of elections, this will have an immediate impact of costs of elections, and it will have another cost, what it sounds like to pay this person to serve in this role. Um, the people standing in front of you, all of the trustees, don't want to be paid anymore. Uh, they've already decided that. We've already decided that together. So the thought of then bringing in another elected position that gets paid is kind of opposite of that as well. Um, I need a qualified person who knows exactly what's going on with the finances of Wellington, day and day out, so he can find insights that are uh, worth mentioning or considerations that need to be brought before the board, and I think the most knowledgeable person would be the Finance Director. I think that we've seen this work really well in the um, recent past uh, with Mr. Rhodes, and I'm very happy with that current situation. I'd like to keep them combined.
Thank you, trustee Daly. Um, yeah, I mean, both both Leadville and Salida are rather small municipalities. I mean, Leadville, I think is like twenty-six hundred, and Salida's like five thousand, fifty-five hundred people. Um, so in those towns, there's not much to do um, as as there is here. I mean, we're at twelve thousand and continuing to grow. Um, I would like to see us have, you know, a very qualified Finance Director like Mr. Rhodes, um, be able to use that and see how things are turning out when we have somebody who is highly qualified in running things before we would address having a separate position or an election of that sort for Treasurer. Not saying that we might not need one in the future, but I'd like to see how things would pan out um, over time with a solid candidate and somebody who is really qualified to see how they handle it. Um, and how we can maybe use them to do both um, facets of that for us in that realm. Um, so that's, that's my take on it currently. Um, so that's, that's where I'm at.
So I will need some direction. And I've heard three that want to proceed with potentially, is it an elected position? Is that what I'm hearing?
So I don't, I think that I would, that is one idea. I think I I would like to see a separate. It doesn't have to be elected. I'm open to other options. I see the elected position as an option to keep that less expensive, right? We're not having to hire a full-time staff person. Um, I'm not opposed to looking at other options. And again, I'm not saying it has to be this way, but I I would prefer that we actually pursue looking into that and figuring out what would be a feasible option. So I would say, from my standpoint, I think elected might be a way that we can do it without having to break the budget. But I'm not set that that's the only way it can be done, but I would prefer that we look at a separation.
I've heard three that would prefer a separation. I've heard from three so far that would prefer to keep it one position. We have not heard from Mayor Portim McDonald. So I'm really excited about the opportunity for us to use the talent that we have in our Human Resources Department to recruit a qualified staff member that can fill this role. I think that that's where we're going to find some cost savings um, in filling this position. I don't think that changing the municipal code at this time to modify the Treasurer role is a good idea. I do think it's an interesting idea that we can keep in the back of our mind in case this recruitment isn't unsuccessful, but um, I I support trustee Mason and trustee Daly on their questions.
So this is something we maybe want to bring back next year before budget?
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea.
See how things are panning out with the new position?
The board's spoken. I just think it's good. Let's, let's move forward with the combined position. I you know, obviously, in April, we have elections next year, so there will be a new composition of the Board of Trustees. I think it would be wise to take time to look into that, and at that point, hopefully we'll have a new person in the position and see how it's working. And again, that's, I I've talked about this for three years, and I think this is the most substantive contact conversation we've had in four years that I've brought this up. So I appreciate that, just having the conversation. But I would say, I think the boards has said we prefer to stay combined, so I say we stay with that for now. We work on getting a good person in the role, and we can reevaluate it next year if that makes sense.
I'll set it on my calendar for June. Sound good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Clerk, will you please read the titles of the items on the consent agenda?
Item D one, November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Item D two, resolution number forty-nine, twenty twenty-three, resolution of the town of Wellington. Board of Trustees authorizing an application for Water Smart Grant Funding through the Bureau of Reclamation. Item D three, resolution number fifty dash twenty twenty-three, Wellington Community Housing Bylaws Amendment.
Your motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mister Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Portim McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll proceed to action items. Mister Clerk, will you please read the title, item E one?
Continued Ordinance Number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, annexing Sage Farms Annexation and Village at Sage Farms Annexation and Annexation Agreements, including Establishment of vested Development Rights.
Thank you. Mister Cody Bird, Planning Director, uh, please present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mister Moose, would you mind advancing me to a panelist, please? Thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor and Trustees, Cody Bird, Planning Director. Um, I'm going to introduce this item with the the punchline first. At the end of this, the action we're asking the board to do is to continue this agenda item to a later date, to January twenty-third. Um, what we did want to do, thank you. Um, we wanted to provide you some kind of a progress update on things that we've been working on. Um, and with the kind of the overlying theme that when we originally presented this agenda item, um, we had um, continued it to a later date, and again, continued it because we're addressing issues related to water rights, irrigation wells, how water would be um, satisfying the irrigation requirements for this proposed annexations and subdivision development plan. And we're making progress on those conversations, but we have not yet reached a final resolution recommendation to share with the board. Um, but we did, and along with the water topics, we're addressing some other items as well. They wanted to provide you an update for some context for kind of where we're at on this. Um, I asked Mister Moose to advance me to a panelist, so I could also do a screen share. It's been a while since we've talked about this, so I wanted to at least get the map and things up on the the screen, and I recognize trustee Daly is not here as well, so um, just to keep some context on what we are discussing. Too many windows open. So as I'm navigating here, page sixty-two in your packet is where um, this agenda item begins. And here's the location map for the annexation area. Um, the project that's proposed is annexation of approximately three hundred acres um, in two adjacent parcels being Sage Farms Annexation and Village at Sage Farms Annexation. Um, we initially brought this uh, to the board in August and conducted the required public hearings under state statutes, and that public hearing was closed and a resolution was adopted finding that property was eligible for annexation and proceeding on to um, or was eligible to proceed to zoning considerations, which were um, or was eligible to proceed to zoning considerations, which were providing a planned unit development proposal um and vesting development rights over a period of twenty or twenty-five years, depending on the location within the development, um, and some details around irrigation water and some other substantive matters in the annexation agreements. Um, those agenda materials have been included in a couple of different packets, and we've included those again here, as well as references to prior meetings where you could go and find the additional uh supporting documentation for this agenda item. Um, as we've been working through um the other elements of this project proposal, um, one of the topics that came up from our uh referral uh comments, we refer cases like an annexation to other agencies that have a right to weigh in on it. One of the comments we got back from um Elko, uh, East Laramo County Water District, they identified that a portion of this property was with was within their water service area boundary. And we required the developer to seek an exclusion from their, the Elko district, and that is in process. It is not yet complete, but indication from Elko is that they don't have objections to excluding this from this project from their service area. Um, should be a matter of documenting the final approvals. So we wanted to share that update with you. We don't have documentation in the packet for that, but that is something that we're working on. Um, we also heard some questions from um prior meetings regarding the conceptual lot layout. And so we asked the developer, and and Mr. Darren Roberson is here tonight um as well. Um, and Mr. Roberson, I don't know if you have this board, if you wanted to use that as well, we could do that. Um, poster board showing the same graphic um that's in the agenda packet here and on the screen. Um, but some of the questions from prior meetings, thank you, um, were related to the conceptual plan was more of a color diagram showing large blocks and a general road alignment. But it wasn't clear kind of how that related to lot arrangement, lot lines. And we recognize that this is um a conceptual lot layout, which was the requirement for annexation. Sorry, my connection's unstable. There we go. Um, but the the lag on the screen's incredible. It's distracting. I hope that trustee Daly and those at home can can view that all right. Um, the, what we tried to provide here um was just a further detail on what the proposed uh alignment and layout might look like to show the relationships of the large lot residential, some smaller lot residential, some alley loaded. Um, if anyone's not familiar with that term, I'm happy to speak to it more. But um some different density types for single-family detached, um, as well as some of the areas that are proposed for uh single-family attached units, like fourplexes, possibly apartments, the zoning would allow for that if that were the developer's desire. Sorry, my internet connection dropped. Um, so I have the poster board here. Good to have a backup. Um, and the other component that we we asked for further detail on, some of the questions we we heard were about the park and open space dedication. Um, the thank you, sir. Um, and this was in the packet as well. Trustee Daly, my apologies, this is um page sixty-five or six in the packet. Um, we asked for some further details to help show the relation, the spatial relationship of that thirty-four acres of park and open space. I think some of the questions we heard were concerns around, um, that's going to be a lot of drainage and and ponds and water. And that's really not the case. We don't allow um wet ponds as part of a stormwater um requirement. So they're intended to be dry, often graded out larger areas, flat bottoms that could accommodate recreation and sports fields. Um, we also asked the developer to include a variety of of public amenities to show, again, a conceptual layout for spatial relationships for what could be possible, not a final design, not intended to be a proposal. Um, but just to help with the context of this is thirty-four acres and what could be located there, including uh amenities, recreational fields, ball fields, parking lots, tennis courts, pickleball courts, um, variety of of activities, as well as make the storm water drainage function required for the overall development plan. Um, so we wanted to share that details and some questions were generated around what that possibility could look like. Um, in the annexation agreements, there was also a proposal that if the town and developer agreed, possibly considering um offsetting some of the dedication for open space in this subdivision for strategic property elsewhere in town um as a possibility for town facilities. And so we wanted to use this illustration as a way of showing um the amount of amenities that would fit in that thirty-four acres. That if twelve to fourteen acres were offset elsewhere, there's still a sizable amount of recreation open space. One of the considerations behind that offset for another strategic property location was, I've shared this in a prior meeting too, but this property being located near the southern boundary of the town, being a primary um park for multiple amenities may not suit the overall community needs. And so the idea was to look for opportunities to spread those amenities into existing areas of the town where recreation amenities are not readily available and in areas that are already already developed where it's hard to squeeze those in. There's a few strategic opportunities we wanted to take a look at. Um, Mr. Roberson is here tonight. Um, I'll let you jump in if there's anything else you wanted to share on updates. Um, and kind of present this as these are the things that have changed. Um, the updates, and again, our request is to continue this to January twenty-third uh to allow time to work out the final details.
Hi, everybody. I'm Darren Roberson. Um, Cody's going to pass around. I think he talked to the board in a work session about thirteen acres that we have under contract. We've actually had it under contract for probably the last eleven months. Um, I got to say, without Cody's help on it or bringing it forward to me, this wouldn't be where it's at today. So I mean, for Cody, who's for planning and trying to put this deal together. But right now, we're in a position where we're planning on closing on this thirteen acres right there uh west of the supermarket by Hartford Homes. We're planning on closing on it uh January thirteen or January by the fifteenth. Um, our plan would be is to actually hopefully be able to dedicate that and do a swap, because there's plenty, as you can see in that open space and park. Um, twenty twenty-two acres will be plenty of park on the southern end of Wellington. And yet this location um would be superior and more of a local point of interest for everybody to be able to enjoy. I guess my question is, does town board want us to close it? I mean, I guess we'll still buy it and we can do multifamily or something else on it, but we'd rather give it back and work with the the town on it. We haven't heard any comments yet because I don't think we've asked. Is there any questions on it, or is this a good location, or should we just bail on the deal and walk?
Or with trustee Wigan?
I think that'd be a great spot for development, nice and close in.
Multi-family or for uh or for like a
For parks. For parks, pickleball, all that kind of good stuff at that point. I think, isn't there a flood zone right through there?
Well, there is, there is a flood zone. I mean, we've done it all to due diligence. We did a um Altus survey on it. Uh, we've done uh soils reports on it. We've done a a phase one on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe it is somewhat in the flood plain.
The the property is lo- located adjacent to Box Elder Creek. Um, but the the flood plain implications are not dramatic on that site that couldn't be mitigated. And in parks and open space, that's usually an area where you want to have
Right.
your flood plain. Um, so we, there's definitely ways to work with the flood plain around.
Right, so that'd be a real good use of the property at that point, too. And if we have usable property elsewhere that we can actually bring into the tax base, it'd probably be more conducive for that, so. I agree.
Yep.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
I think that um Mr. Roberson does his homework, and he's consulted with our parks and recreation groups prior to, as Mr. Bird explained, doing um an overall scope of the amenities that are provided throughout the community and really being thoughtful about what is being placed where instead of throwing, you know, twenty basketball courts right next to twenty more basketball courts. That doesn't, it doesn't, really doesn't make sense. So I really appreciate the forward-thinking approach and looking at the parks plan. And I think that the land swap idea is brilliant. So I I think that that I would be willing to support in the motion of continuation, that that should be part of the, you know, the future plan on this.
Well, don't make me do it.
Well, I don't want you to continue investing your time and money because you're going to close on this prior to coming back to the board. So you kind of need to have some direction. And based off of what all of the work that you've done between the last couple of presentations and tonight, you've obviously invested a lot in trying to bring a a quality product to the community. That makes sense. So I can appreciate that you want to hear from us some sort of clear direction on do we support this land swap opportunity as part of the the continuation of this project.
And again, without Cody's help, this wouldn't have been put together. You can't always believe Cody's. That's why I got to ask you guys.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, by doing this swap, we would, you'd be able to develop this particular property a lot quicker than you'd be able to de- develop that.
No, I think if we did the land swap, guys, um we would ask to get um take away thirteen or fourteen acres of our open space on the southern end of Four Collins Farms and be able to do something different, maybe a multifamily project, kind of adjacent, maybe from a UC Health um that you see a letter that we put in the packet. So I don't think the town needs thirty-two acres on the far end of s- of South Wellington for open space and parks, when we can still give you a twenty-acre park for the community and then get a central park location, be it pickleball courts, be it soccer fields, be it a library, be it a rec center uh that actually is the center location of Wellington.
But by the way, you had this developed over a twenty-year period of time, that would be down the road quite a bit. And this will be fairly immediate. Right.
Um, that's something Cody and I are still talking about. We might come back to the board and say, hey, just in lieu of paying ta- uh parks fees. Um, I think developers put in parks and open space sooner. So I see us actually for Sage Farms, putting in the parks and open space sooner because we're going to need the detention anyway. It's going to be a timing deal of, you know, three to four years out. We have enough residents going on that we would actually like to put that in ahead of time. But it would be up to the town on the other thirteen acres next to the uh Hartford Homes and and um the supermarket uh to plan it out and get comments from the uh public on what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the land will be, uh, we'll have it closed, but I mean, I imagine we could do the land swap sometime in twenty twenty-four, possibly.
I think we can spell
The details out.
You know, we could definitely consider some of those details in the annexation agreement because it would provide direction for staff for how to proceed, some certainty for the developer on what they need to be doing next. And the board understands that through your uh ability to enter into agreements could set the tone for how that should look and the timing of that.
And there's been a lot of, there's, there's been a lot of cleanup on that thirteen acres that we're going to have to do and still doing. I mean, I don't think the town could ever put the deal together between the phase one, the Alta. The the tax, it went into tax.
Um, tell me out. I think you said it wrong when the property needed a lot of cleanup. There was, there was a lot
There's still cleanup.
diligence to assemble a couple, multiple parcels and work through the the legalities of how to get those parcels cleaned for a fee simple exchange.
Yeah, yeah. But we're, we're there.
Trustee Mason?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, Mr. Roberson, uh, Cody, appreciate the presentation on this. Um, I, you know, I I think this board adds some discussion behind this particular property. And without going into too much detail behind that, um, I I would certainly support a uh swap on this. I think it fits right in line with our comprehensive plan as as far as uh, and certainly with our our parks and open space and trails. Um, so I I would very much be in support of a swap there. Uh, also, just wanted to say I I do appreciate that the discussion regarding the wells are still ongoing. I think, uh, you know, having non-potable irrigation for some of these communities is is pretty much essential for some of the things we're working for uh here. Um, and I was also very excited to see the uh letter intent uh from uh UC Health, so.
And we've been working with Kevin for a couple of years on that, but and we've been in communication. And we should hopefully have the well test done. I hopefully by next month, we got direction from uh Megan with the town on what she was looking and requiring. Kind of been waiting on the farmer to actually uh uh swat the corn. So we don't flood them out and flood out our goosebumps. So, but uh we hope to have that done here in the next thirty days or so, Tom and I. So.
Um, Dan, before I move on to trustee Daly, can she comment on this item, or should we hold off?
This is, overall, today is a continuation, but overall, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. And and because she's removed, I'd highly recommend that she not participate in this today. Um, in the past, we've had members of the board participate remotely for information gathering, and then when they're present, they can vote. But it's just the policy to to not vote on quasi-judicial matters, so I certainly would recommend she avoid that.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Gator?
All right. Uh, appreciate the information. Um, I I'm open to, thank you for building this out. That actually helps me to see like, okay, because it, because I I was one of those concerned, but wait, hold on. If we take away thirteen, how much are we going to have left? So it's helpful to actually see how much space there is, so I appreciate that. Um, I think, I mean, this is not a you issue. I mean, if we're going to take a property, we need to figure out what we're going to do with that. Um, so we don't just have a property sitting there, but um it does give us an opportunity to do something in the middle of town. And I think if we can open up more, again, if we couldn't go and put more tax generating in that thirteen acres, if we can turn that into a park and then get more tax revenue base in the on the south side, that would make sense. So I would be, obviously, need to make sure that all makes sense, but I'm open to the idea, so.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Trustee?
I am open to the idea, but I have some additional questions. Do we know, I know that I had asked this previously, and I don't know if we received an answer yet. Do we know how many acres that is located over by Ridley's is actually usable in that acreage being donated? Because you're looking at railroad easements, do we know exactly how many acres we're actually swapping of usable space?
I don't, yeah, I I don't have an exact number memorized for you. It's between twelve and thirteen or just over thirteen acres of of real property. Um, there are easements and things in there that, again, Mr. Roberson is working on cleaning up. There were some railroad easements identified in the Alta survey that may no longer be needed and quiet title or some other process might free up some additional space, and that's not yet completed yet. That's something that Mr. Roberson's still working on. So I don't have the final number for you, but I have with high confidence that the uh twelve to thirteen acres of usable parks, recreation, open space, town facility space would be viable. And it's adjacent to um existing town open space that we could combine multiple parcels to do something bigger and make the connections if that were the desire.
Got it. My other question stems, and it's related to these parks and the swapping of acreage. Um, I noticed the addition of or change of wordings to note um the addition of private parks. Are you planning on building any private parks in this area that you're demonstrating here?
We're still going to have our clubhouse and pool.
Okay, so but is that included in the open space that we're giving up?
No, not at all.
Okay, so that's independent of the acreage.
Yeah, so right now you got thirty-two to thirty-four acres right there. We're obviously going to have our irrigation pond for our non-pot and our uh pool is
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll still have our open space that's uh required. We'll just be taking away thirteen or fourteen acres of that open space if we do a land swap.
Got it. So in taking away the thirteen to fourteen acres is not for your pool and clubhouse and whatnot?
No.
Okay, perfect. So that would be just additional acreage that would be, are you asking for the additional acreage there as a part of a swap as well?
I don't think it makes sense to have thirty-two acres of parks and open space on the southern end of Wellington. So I think this is actually a benefit for the town. You're kind of now getting two big parks. Um, I don't think you have a twenty-two acre park right now anyway, anywhere. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think, I think, put things in perspective, the
Buffalo Creek.
The North Park up here, that's, what is that, eleven acres?
Wellington Community Park is approximately eleven, again, I don't have the number memorized, but Wellington Community Park is about eleven to twelve acres in total, and about half of that is uh creek and flood plain.
Right, so that thing's huge.
The amenities, the 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 dog park, the pond, um, the ball fields, batting cages.
BMX track.
BMX track, that that's probably in the flood plain and and open space portion of that. Um, but the the developed amenities and, you know, sidewalks and and physical infrastructure is about six to seven acres um to give you a kind of a scale or uh perception of what that looks like.
So I think our goal was to kind of show you guys how massive this project is and how big this park is. And so taking thirteen acres away still is going to give you guys a huge community park area.
And spread the wealth.
Pardon?
Throughout the community, and it'll spread the wealth throughout the community.
And and actually going to give you another one in a separate location that's still bigger than anyone you have currently. And and the serve the community.
Right, well, and like I said, I'm not against the generalized idea of just kind of understanding all of the details of what that exchange of total acreage is. So it's a just thirteen acres exchange for the twelve to thirteen acres that we're getting over by the railroad track in Ridley's.
I think what we did, guys, we put it in our annexation agreement so we can have this discussion in next spring or after we get you guys the Alta survey, the soils reports and all the due diligence that we did. There's some tax issues that we need to clean up because there was originally a tax lien against this property.
Oh, God.
We're cleaning all Cause there was originally a tax lien against this property. We're cleaning all that up. And so we're spending money just. And that's where I don't think the town could have ever bought this project because they don't have the eight or ten months to put a contract together like this. Um, so, um, we're not gonna do this with the annexation of Sage Farms. This is just something we want to be able to hopefully bring into the board here next spring. As we bring our project forward so that you guys can be fully aware of it. But I would like to have comments to say, hey, we think it's a good idea.
Got it.
If I'm BS and you, you know, whatever, let's, let's don't buy it.
Got it. Yeah, no, and I, I am open to this idea. I just, I'm that person that wants to know.
You need more information.
I do. Yes. So.
And we will give you guys more of that information, but it's nice to know that the board, I think, supports it on the land swap. And again, seeing how big our. The, the park is right now that's proposed for Sage Farms. I think we can take some of that away. And actually then if we bring a UC Health or someone in on the commercial side, put some multifamily or diversified housing across from that. Um, it's a better suit of that land. So.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm in favor of it. So thank you for all your due diligence and everything you do for this community.
And again, without Cody, I don't think, I mean, he brought it to me. Otherwise we wouldn't be standing here talking about that thirteen acres right now.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Burton.
Any other questions on, I mean, again, we're gonna try to do a work session. We're hopefully gonna get comments back, um, on the wells so that the town's comfortable and the developers comfortable. Um, on the well and the ownership of the wells. Uh, hopefully we'll have the well test. If not, I mean, still we'll, we'll have it done before any annex or any platting's done. Um, we hopefully, we, we think a work session's in line. Um, we want to get through the holidays and all that. And that's where we kind of thought, let's get it fresh in our mind, do a work session. Middle of January and then bring this back around the twenty-third, I'm guessing on dates, but.
The twenty-third, so we're recommended.
Yeah. So hopefully we have all the board members here, we hope. And, and I mean, it's a, it's a big project for the town of Wellington.
Yeah.
There's the only thing that I ask. Um, when we do come back for the work session, the standards that you guys have on page eighty and eighty-one. Um, can, is there a way to get those enlarged just a little so they're easier to read?
Uh, trustee Teets, thank you for that comment. That's certainly something we're happy to do. It, I'll take a look at page eighty and eighty-one. I don't remember exactly. Okay. Is it from the, the zoning map?
Yes. Well, no, it's the listing of, um, so it's your standards.
Okay. Okay. We'll take a look at that. It, it, it may depend on the timing of when we bring those to you. We can certainly get them to in advance of the, the twenty-third. It may not be relative to the subject of the work session, but we'll take a look at that and we'll provide the information, um, in print or electronic. Yep. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, all right, we'll move on. Pop, oh, trustee Gator.
Yeah, sorry. It just wasn't in, I didn't want to bring it up on the web management. And this is something again, can be brought back in the work session. But the question I had is with, cause again, we haven't done a PUD yet, but in terms of, I know we collect property tax from residential and sales tax from like commercial. With a PUD, does any of that top tax that's collected, whether it be property or sales tax get diverted? Into the PUD itself, or does that all still just flow straight to the town of Wellington?
The, um, the PUD is the, is the zoning for the property. It's not, it doesn't create any entity. It's just the zoning and it's unique to this particular development plan.
Okay, got it. So it's not creating like the metro district or something else where they get a portion. Okay. Thank you.
Nope. Good question though.
I will tell you right now, my attorney wants a metro district. This project probably should have a metro district. I, as a builder, don't want a metro district. Um, but I mean, this project and maybe the commercial should have a metro district. That's what we're trying to leave open. Um, I don't want one, but we're just trying to figure out how we do the ownership of the wells because there is a real value to those wells and, and. We will, we will table this project. We will. Stop this project if we can't figure out, um, the ownership of the wells that's comfortable with the town and comfortable with us. Cause we do want to be able to, uh, gain that value back over the years. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Uh, we'll open this up for any public comment.
Your honor, or excuse me, Ms. Mayor, I have a question for Cody. Since the public hearing is already closed.
Oh, yeah.
This isn't really appropriate for public comment at this time, correct?
Move for a continuation. Yeah.
I, I have a question. Are we, is it a hard? Line on the twenty-third? Can you, can you do it on the ninth? Is that too much of a crunch of a timeline?
So I, I think that Mr. Roberson had asked, they wanted to do a work session and if we do a work session, that would need to be after the ninth of January. So we wouldn't be able to get a work session and then bring it back on the ninth. I think that was the reason they were talking about twenty-third is so we could do a work session in between that to maybe hammer them things out is what it sounded like.
The twenty-third was identified as a preferred date because of the opportunity to have a work session and get the details out there before the board had to make a decision or was asked to make a decision on it. And the ninth of January is gonna put staff and the developer in a crunch to make tough decisions on a complicated project to put that full. Fully vetted recommendation in front of the board with the holidays in the mix too. So it, it, the twenty-third was the preferred date for those reasons.
Okay. Would it be a problem to push it to the first meeting in February or?
No.
Okay.
I would go ahead and do it on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay.
Do your motion for continuation?
I move to continue ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, annexing Sage Farms annexation and village at Sage Farms annexation and annexation agreement, including establishment. Of vested development rights to our regular board meeting on January, the, hold on. The twenty-third.
By second?
Of twenty twenty-four, in case I was not under clear.
Mr. Clerk, be a good roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Portman McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the item is tabled to the January twenty-three, twenty-two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title of item E two through E four?
Item E two, resolution number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, resolution adopting the budget for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year, beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-four and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-four. Estimating the amount of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy based on said budget. So adopted es- estimating the amount of money to be derived from other revenue sources, setting forth estimated expenditures for each. Item E three, resolution number fifty-two, twenty twenty-three, resolution levying general property taxes for the taxable year twenty twenty-three to defray costs of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year, beginning January one, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Item E four, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three, and emergency ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities of the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year, beginning January one, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. I'm pleased to present the twenty twenty-four Town of Wellington budget to the Board of Trustees and to the community. Adopting the town's budget is one of the most powerful tools you have as an elected official to set your priorities and expectations for the level of service the town provides. The budget tells the story of where we have been and objectives for the future. Their proposed budget was developed with a focus on the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four strategic plan. The draft budget has been presented at four trustee meetings, two finance committee meetings, and at the annual budget bonanza. Comments and suggestions have been heard and incorporated since the first presentation in September twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Apologize. I want to thank the town staff who have worked diligently to create a budget that reflects the goals of their departments. With a focus on creating an environment that supports the residents. They've made reductions in their budgets that come from the needs in their departments, not their want. I appreciate their willingness to acknowledge the goals and the vision of the trustee and to build a budget around that. I want to thank the trustees for open and honest conversations about their desires for the budget. We are working on ideas to address the water and sewer fund's shortfalls and I will keep you apprised as those ideas are developed. I know cost of living or COLA and merit increases have been a discussion point. One of my goals as your town administrator is to assure that the town continues to provide the services expected of our residents. Through water and wastewater operations, communications, library, recreation activities, to name a few. We have a dedicated staff that consistently demonstrates they are willing to go above and beyond for Wellington. And my hope is to do whatever I need to do to make sure that they, that we can retain them. Mr. Don Rhodes will be coming forward and I want to thank him for supporting the budget process. His knowledge has been invaluable. He has been patient as he has learned our finance software and provided the support we have needed. To that, so the support we have needed in order to dive deep into past financial information to get your imbalances set. He will presenting the draft twenty twenty-four budget that you, that you will be considering tonight. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, board, good to be with you again. Don Rhodes, Town Treasurer. Um, and we are here finally at the point where we're talking about, uh, adopting the budget for twenty twenty-four. Uh, and as Ms. Garcia mentioned, uh, it, it's been, um, a, a long process. So for those that might be watching or here that haven't been through the whole process, it. Uh, started back on September nineteen and we had a couple of, uh, meetings just to review the operating budget and the, and the capital improvement budget. And then there was a budget overview in October and the budget bonanza and then an update in November and then we're finally here. So. Uh, it's been a, been a, a long process and, um, uh, I say that because tonight, uh, you'll. Everybody will likely be, uh, happy to hear that I, I don't have another rehash of the same PowerPoint that you've seen multiple times already. Um, I felt that that was, that was cruel and unusual. So we're not gonna do that again tonight, but I, I, I did want to, um. At least summarize the budget for you and for those that might be listening in perhaps for the first time and then talk about some of the changes since the last time. There have been a few changes, not a lot, but, uh. Some significant changes since the last time we looked at the budget. So we'll talk about those, uh, those as well. Um, so talking about the, the changes first of all, and then we'll talk about the budget numbers. Um, there was a, a reduction in, um, revenues, a reduction in property taxes. There was some recent legislation at the state level. Uh, that made a, a change to, uh, the property tax, uh, rate and that, um, reduced our property taxes, uh, a, about what proposition HH would have been. So we'd already calculated that to be about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So the budget numbers that you have in your packet that we're talking about tonight includes that, uh, that reduction. I, I don't have the actual, uh, certified assessment from the county assessor's office yet. That's not required for them to send that to us until January three. I talked to the assessor's office and they said, yeah, they're gonna need till January three to get us those numbers. Um, so, um. We'll know for sure the numbers. I, I believe it'll be close to what we have in the budget adopted tonight. Um, but, uh, we'll know for sure once we get that, uh, that number on January three. And if we need to make a, a change to it, we can make a budget adjustment, uh, down, down the road. But I, I suspect that what we're adopting tonight would be, uh, very close to accurate. Um, so that's a, that's a negative to the general fund, losing that, that property tax, those property tax dollars there. However. Um, there was another round, um, your, uh, town administrator and staff, uh, went through and did a, a fine tooth comb once again and came up with another hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in reduction. In general fund, operating budget expenditure. So that almost offset that loss in revenue right there. And then another fifteen thousand in the, uh, in the park operating fund. Uh, on the capital improvement project side, there were a few changements, uh, mostly just adjustments in the timing of projects for the most part. So for instance, um, as it, uh. Mentioned in the staff report, the, the water and sewer fund, there's been some adjustments to push back or delay a little bit, a couple of the projects there, uh, in those funds. Uh, for water and sewer and in, in the street and in the, uh, storm drainage funds. There's been some adjustments there to move some of the projects up, mostly having to do with, uh, Cleveland Avenue improvements and, um, and so those projects have been moved up a little bit. Um, and those two funds are, are in better financial shape than the water and sewer fund. So that should work out fine. Uh, and then finally some good news in the parks fund, um, there was a project, um, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for, um, completion of the splash pad chemical room. Uh, that was a rollover from an earlier year and, uh, I, uh, was notified that it looks like we, they may be able to finish that project up this year for, uh, quite a, a, a reduction. Uh, in cost way under budget. So that project's coming off of the twenty twenty-four, um, CIP list altogether. Cause it looks like they're gonna be able to finish that up this year. So that's, that's another good news item. Uh, as far as the budget itself, I'll just hit some, some highlights and then happy to, happy to answer any questions. Um. Cause we've, we've looked at these numbers before, but, uh, I, I did want to mention a, a few key things. Um, one of them is that at the bottom line, when we get to the, uh, ending fund balance for all of the town funds. Uh, all of the funds, and I mentioned this early on and it's still the case. So I thought it was worth bringing up again. All the, all of the funds. Um, currently exceed the board's policy for what the ending fund balance should be. So there's. A, a lot of discussion about fund balances and, uh, some funds are in better shape than the other, than others, um, for sure. But at least for twenty twenty-four, uh, we do meet the, the board's, uh, requirements for what fund balance should be. Um, those requirements were set about a year ago, uh, so that, uh, that, that's a good news thing. Um, I'll say another good news thing, net operations, you know, we, we split the budget into, you know, operating revenues, those ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures. So that you can see on an ongoing basis, what, uh, what are operations look like? And across all funds, uh, we're in the black or to the good, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now that varies within funds, of course. Um, and I'll, I'll mention, I'll mention one, I'll mention the general fund and this is same, same discussion that we had. Um, a few weeks ago when we looked at the budget, uh, the general fund is upside down in total eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars going into the year. Um, but that was a very specific and targeted policy decision that we wanted the general fund, uh, the board wanted the general fund to help out the water and sewer fund. To minimize any rate changes there that had to happen as much as possible. So there's a million and forty-nine thousand dollars that has been transferred, um, in just twenty twenty-four. That's not counting twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Uh, as well, but in just twenty twenty-four. So had that not million forty-nine thousand dollars not been there, the general fund would have been in the black, uh, as well. So. I, I don't, whereas none of us like to see negative numbers, of course, for any of the funds. Um, the general fund, uh, ending balance is healthy. It's at seven point, uh, three million dollars, seven million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Even with that, uh, transfer to the water and the sewer funds. Um, and the board policy would have the, the ending balance at two point seven million dollars. So you're, whereas we don't like to see it drawing down and that's not something that I would certainly recommend. Be a long-term thing. Um, it, it, it does completely make sense, uh, the way the board is, is decided to do it now. And so I just wanted to point that out. If somebody were to see, well, you're eight hundred thousand dollars upside down on the general fund, what's going on? Um, that's a specific policy decision that the board made to help out those other funds. Um, that had that not happened, they would have been in, uh, in the black for that fund. So I know you're well aware of that. I just wanted to, to point that out again for somebody that might be, uh, considering the budget for the first time. Um, so with all of that, where there's twenty-four point one million dollars in operating expenditures in the budget, another. Um, forty-four point five million dollars in capital projects. Of course, the two treatment plants are the lion's share of that by far. Um, for a total budget that we'll, we'll look at when we look at our resolutions and our ordinances, a total, uh, operating budget, uh, total operating capital budget of sixty-eight point six million dollars for twenty, uh, for twenty twenty-four. I, I will, I will point out that, that's, that's a, a very high level overview, uh, with some good points in there, but, um. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't mention the, the tougher points as well. Again, I know you, you're all painfully a, aware of them because you've been through this many times, but for anybody that might be listening for the first time. Um, I will just mention there's several good things to talk about there in the budget, but you'll see, uh, in the resolutions that we're adopting. That we're, uh, recommending a, a six million dollar loan between the raw water reserve in the water fund. And the impact fee reserve in the water fund. Um, it's, it's a little unusual because it's all within one fund. Uh, but as we've talked about in the past, we, it, we thought it made sense to document clearly, uh, because it's a little unusual for kind of, for future folks that might come along. And look at what was, uh, was done here. So that's the raw water fund, loaning the impact fee fund, uh, those dollars, um, in order to keep everything balanced. Um. And that still leaves in the raw water reserve. Uh, there's two and a half million dollars in the CIP budget. If that is approved, then that would be appropriated dollars should, uh, uh, an opportunity come along to purchase, uh, water supply. And there's another two million dollars still left in that reserve beyond that, uh, should, should more opportunity come up. And you'll, you probably saw in the, uh, in the resolution that, uh, appropriates the budget that we included that six million dollar loan. There is a repayment, um, plan in there as well. So it's, it's not something we wanted to leave open and loose. We wanted to make sure that that, uh, that was, uh. Put in writing and that it's something that could be tracked and followed easily. Uh, the other thing I'll mention, and again, just to highlight, because we've been over this before, um, is the, the sewer fund, um, also. When we, when you look not in twenty twenty-four, but by twenty twenty-five, we're projecting the sewer fund could be upside down, a, a million and. a million and a half dollars. That's a that's an estimate right now. So given both of those factors and just given how tight the budget is to begin with, one thing that your town administrator, myself have talked about is we would like to recommend a another a budget review. I almost always recommend a budget, like a mid-year budget review because we're doing revenue estimates now and everybody's putting their best effort into estimating what their budget costs are going to be and what programs are going to be needed. But very often you get partway into the year and you get to see how the year closed out. You see maybe those budget savings, your revenue estimates were either a little above, a little below. So I usually recommended at least the mid-year review in the summer, but given some of these items we've talked about, like in the water and in the sewer fund, as well as in the general fund, I would suggest a first quarter review. Let's let's close out March 31. And then shortly after that, by then we'll have good numbers for the end of December. And we can look at the end of this 2023, we can look at the first quarter 2024. And then just see where things are. In other words, if we are projecting now that we're going to be a million and a half upside down in sewer next year, I would not recommend waiting until the fall to take a first look at, well, I wonder how that all turned out. So that's something we're we're proposing here that we come back in the spring, actually, just to get a good heads up, how did this year end? How'd the first quarter look? And we may have more information about water costs by then. We may have more information about how the big treatment plant projects are going. And so there's that's a that's a proposal. I guess what I'm trying to say there is that whereas we're hoping the budget gets adopted tonight, it's not, it's not like it's another year before we look at things again. I mean, it would be at least mid-year, I would suggest a first quarter, just and you wouldn't have to do that every year, wouldn't have to do that every quarter. But just given some of the key things that we've talked about throughout this budget process in water and sewer and elsewhere, I think that's that's worth. I think that's worth consideration. That is the extent of my high level overview. And our recommendation is that we adopt resolution 51 2023. And then there's another resolution and an ordinance as well right after that, but we can talk about those separately, I guess. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Gator.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, for bringing that all together and presenting that. The I mean, we've I appreciate just the work that's gone in in kind of addressing a lot of the questions that have been asked. And I do appreciate was going through and pulled together, you know, where do we have the decreases and the increases in the budget from what we were presented on the 10th of October to this current budget and can see where those shifts are and adjustments. I appreciate all the work that's gone into that. I guess the one area I did have concern on, I know that we're like in the black overall with the with the operations, which is a great thing. And again, thank you very much for breaking that out because it is helpful to have moved all of the grants and everything in CIP down at the bottom. So we have that clear view. So thank you very much for that. The one piece that does concern me in that is the sewer fund. So obviously, the general fund, we know that's intended negative on that. So have no issue there. But on the sewer fund, even with the transfer in of the 358,000, we're still just operationally, we're at a $429,000 at a loss for that with just operations. That's no CIP, that's nothing else. And the concern there is that as we go forward into next year and we're talking about it going into the red, the solution to that, we've got a lot of things to look at, but part of that is possibly a loan like we're doing with the water fund. Where we're loaning money, but then that adds to the debt service, which if you look at that fund, there's the debt services what's killing us. I mean, our debt services. I think like two thirds of our revenue, but that we were, I appreciate doing a first quarter, I think will help with that. So that was one concern that I did have on that portion. The other areas, I would say that we've I've brought this up before. So again, for me, none of these are new. I think that we need to again, have looked back and we're looking at the last couple of years, we've been looking at roughly a 10% increase in the wages and salaries is what we've had. If you average it out across our current positions. And I know there's been different things. I know last year we had some changes from the study that was done that affected salaries, but even the year before that, we still were averaging about 10% increases. So that actually went above and beyond just merit and COLA. I do appreciate that we're holding the new positions potentially to first quarter. I would prefer that those actually be pulled from the budget completely and then reevaluated for a budget amendment at the first quarter. Because if we leave them in the budget, those are still approved positions that there's no, there's no action needed by the board for those to just be filled, whether the finances are good or not. So I prefer that those actually be pulled and then placed on. And I don't even mind putting them on a specific agenda. But I prefer that they be pulled from the budget for the time being and then put on a specific agenda for a budget amendment. You know, following that first quarter review, so maybe the first meeting in April, so that we can discuss that. So from my end, that's what I'd like to see there. Personally, I would prefer that we just do a cost of living adjustment and not have a merit pool. So just a 3%. If we are tied that we absolutely will do merit. One of the things that I would like to propose is that we actually do a merit bonus at the end of the year. So at end of October. So it's twofold, it can be give us a chance to make sure that we're okay placed financially. And then it's a bonus that can be paid out at the end of October. So it's just in time for holidays. But we can still have that money set aside for the same amount, but have it paid out as a bonus for close of year. So if we're intent that keeping that in there, I would be open to doing that as a merit bonus in like the end of October. But those are the two things that would be my concerns with the budget. I'd like to see changed if I were to approve it.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Hello. I, first of all, I appreciate that the budget has been brought before so many times and so many significant changes have occurred. Based on public feedback, based on the feedback of this board, it's been from from my time with the board, it's been the most engaged process yet. And so I love our progress that we've made. The two things I want to highlight that were obviously direct feedback from the community and a big priority of our board that's included in this budget is the two very large items relating to utility rates indirectly. So between the general fund transfers, you know, around a million dollars a year potentially in the future as well, as well as the interfund grant that's included right there for water. You know, those, all those monies are preventing utility rates from increasing drastically. So I appreciate that this board was standing up to make sure that we can protect our residents as much as possible, borrowing against our own water fund versus borrowing against our residents with water rates is the right thing to do. So I appreciate that we're able to not have to increase water rates and sewer rates more. So I really appreciate that that's included in this budget. The one thing regarding sewer, the sewer fund that's been brought up multiple times is you know, there's no way to improve it. We're looking towards next year or the year after next year, all the concerns there. I mean, we keep saying that there's nothing that we can do to impact that and that's wrong. I mean, I don't think that the costs are going anywhere anytime. There's not a ton of potential of decreasing expenses in that fund, but what there is is a great opportunity to increase revenue. All of our, you know, estimates here are based off of conservative growth within Wellington. This board specifically has the power to usher in any kind of growth that would help with the sewer fund in the future. So as much as we're saying looking towards 2025 and the concerns there, we do have control over that variable to improve opportunities for those impact fees that we increased to also improved on the impact of those impact fees. So I think there is some opportunity there. Obviously, it is scary. But I hate the fact that it kept saying, there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do. There is something we can do. The last thing, I do appreciate all the cuts of, I'm doing air quotes right now, but of wants within the budget. Because I think that a lot of the wants, although they weren't essential for like ongoing operation of our town. A lot of those wants are relating to improving the quality of life of our residents. Now, I understand that we are doing the responsible thing here, being conservative with our expenses. But I do want to acknowledge that when our staff is cutting and slimming down our budget over and over and over again. I mean, we're cutting things that are being recommended to improve the quality of life for our residents. Quality of life also increases community belonging and that's what gets people to spend money and stay in Wellington to go to out to eat, to do all these things that impact our sales tax, which then pours back into Wellington to allow us to do more things to improve the quality of life of Wellington residents. So I do want to acknowledge that and I understand and I appreciate that we're being very conservative and careful there. But I do want to note that we have some things in our strategic plan that we cut wants that would have really contributed to what this board has identified as what's important to us. But with that said, I also do agree that we need to be conservative. So I do need to state that. The last thing I need to mention is we have the most important investment in our entire town on our most important resources. And those are the people who run this town. Those are the people who run the water plants that bring water to your home. This is a, this is a question of public safety. These employees sacrifice a lot and go above and beyond what's required to service our town. And they're fantastic and like and often do this understaffed. So when we're talking about whether or not our staff deserves the cost of living increase, which is actually under the inflation rate by 0.7%. Already underpaid for COLA, not saying that I'm recommending increasing it, but I just want to put this in perspective. Inflation is 3.7% as as likely indicated by estimates for 2023. We're only increasing it cost of living or 3%. So they're already at a disadvantage. Now to say, hey, your hard work is going to be rewarded based on your specific efforts and what you bring to our town. I want to maximize that. We've determined the maximums 3% and our staff deserves that. And I, in my mind, that is non-negotiable. This is what motivates people. This is what tells them that we value them and we do. We sit in these meetings every single day and we compliment staff. Yet when we're talking about this from a budget perspective, we say, oh, maybe not. And maybe all your big expenses and you know, all your bills will only come in October. That's not true. People need this money now. They need to know that they're valued now, not maybe later based on how things are going. We need to value them. We need to tell them their worth, the maximum potential. Which when I'm saying maximum, that's really the standard. We're not going miles above anything that's a standard increase. So the merit and the cost of living increase are essential. And not only that, it's a good financial decision. We're talking about this is what they, what our staff deserves, what they're worth, how we value them. But maximizing this and doing 3% for merit increase will have a direct impact for cost savings in the future related to attrition of our staff. This is the correct way to limit expenses in the future. We talk about our water fund, we talk about our sewer fund. How do we limit expenses? How do we limit expenses? By maximizing our merit increase, we limit expenses relating to attrition for all wages and benefits. Okay, that that is correct. That is how it works. So our staff deserves the 3% merit increase. Our staff deserves 3% COLA. And and anybody who says that that's not the case, I don't think that that is what's best for our town. That's, those are my major points. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Yeah, I really want to thank staff for all the time and effort that they put into this, Mr. Rhodes. I know that Ms. Garcia's staff has put in a lot of time trying to get this budget to where it needs to be, including hundreds of thousands of dollars in cuts as far as what trustee Daly had mentioned, as far as wants go. And even needs in that regard. So I did want to point out a couple of things. Certainly, as far as the Raftalus rate study goes, annual merit increases were already included as a part of that rate study. And I believe when we were out there just a few weeks ago, the project manager for Jacobs indicated that the new water treatment process that we're looking at is going to be one of only two that he knows of in the state. That being the case, considering that we've already got a staffing shortfall for our water utility personally, I'd like to ensure that we've got quality operators out there that are able to continue delivering for residents the most most important service this town provides. Now, I think everybody on this board just got an email about 10 minutes before this meeting started that our communications director is going to be leaving town here and just wanted to thank her for all of the work that she's put in over the years. But if I had to make a wager on it, I'd be willing to suspect that part of the reason why she's leaving is probably because she's going to get a pay increase in Fort Collins. So all this being the case, I very much believe that our staff is worthy of a 3% merit increase. As trustee Daly had all already mentioned, this is already below inflation rate. And I think as part of the packet goes, there's some, there's a few numbers in there that I thought were somewhat important. The percentage of compensation for town employees is 35% of the total operating budget, which is far below the average compensation of state and local government employees of 58.25% of the operations budget. So now I'm not saying that we compare to every other municipality in the state, but what I do know is that I had pointed out earlier tonight that even when we go to find to hire the new finance director, we're already going to be paying that person less than what CML notates as the average pay for a finance director for 2023. So we can, I suppose we can continue putting ourselves in the spot where we don't pay what the market rate is and get underqualified employees or employees that leave to go do other things for other folks in a year or two. And we can keep digging that hole or we can pay people what they deserve. And I think, you know, for me, staff is very important and I think we need to understand that.
Mayor Burden.
I just want to reinforce that the people in local government are the most important capital asset within the organization. I am absolutely not willing to compromise whatsoever on the COLA or the merit increase. We've talked about the rate of inflation increasing, but what we haven't talked about is minimum wage also increased more than 4%. So what kind of message does that send to our staff? That we're not even willing to increase COLA to meet minimum wage requirements. So I am not willing to compromise on a three and three. I think that makes us competitive and at least tells our staff that they're valued.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan.
First off, I'd like to say I appreciate you talking about the tight budget where we're going to be possibly ending up here before long. First off, I do want to make sure that I let all of our people that work for the town know that we do value everything that they do. We know that they work hard. And I tell you what, I wish we could give you a 20% increase. But you know, we do have to be cost effective. You know, we just passed the increase in the water rates for our citizens. You know, we expect them to pay the extra 5%. And because, you know, we got hard decisions to make. You know, we got, you know, we got to make sure that we can cover our budget. That's the reason we did this. But in the process, everybody needs to make a little bit of compensation to this. You know, it's, it's, it's not fun, you know, knowing that you're getting extra, you know, hit every time you turn around, whether it's real estate taxes, whether it's water rates. You know, insurance rates where I'm seeing it all the time. I mean, people are really taking a hit. you know, insurance rates where I'm seeing it all the time. I mean, people are really taking a hit. Uh, and the one thing I would like to see the city do, and I know it's tough, and like I say, I value everything that, you know, water people do. You know, or from every aspect, whether they sweep the road or whatever, they're all very important. So I don't discount anything that they do. You know, I myself, country financial, where I work, we're taking a big hit with our commissions this year because we have to stay competitive in the marketplace. Uh, our home office is in Bloomington, Illinois, right next to State Farm. State Farm is out there poaching our people all the time. I know it's tough to try to keep good people out there constantly. And uh just like what we just lost our gal here. Uh, she went to the private sector. People are going to pay more money, you know, if you're good, you're going to get paid. If you're good, you're going to get poached. You know, I I don't want to see us lose anybody, you know, I value everybody we have. I think we're you guys are extremely valuable, but we do have to be practical too. Uh, you know, I would like to see the cola, you know, I think three percent's okay, three point seven, if that's what we need to do. Possibly that, but I think the merit, maybe we need to back off and maybe look at a bonus down the road. Uh, just you know, we need to have some contingencies out there. You know, we hope and we pray for the best, but we have to prepare for the worst because things can happen out there. You know, when we've done our budget, we're looking at the uh certain amount of building permits. We hope we get that. If we don't, have we planned for the contingency for quite a bit less? You know, we're hoping for renegotiating our water. You know, I hope and I pray that our our gal back there can do it. She's fantastic, but you know, there's a lot of uh uncertainties in that. But if that doesn't come through, what are we going to do? So we need to prepare for the worst too. So again, uh, talking to a gentleman here that was in the military, they got contingencies for everything. If one thing doesn't happen, they got a contingency for another. So again, we have to plan for the worst too. So I would say you know, like I say, the, I don't like ever taking any food out of somebody's mouth, and that's what, you know, depriving somebody of an increase in pay is. But sometimes it's better to do maybe a little bit than having them lose a job completely down the road. So again, we need to plan, we need to have our contingencies. Uh, I would say and again, I'm I'm not necessarily, I don't I would love to have the merit go into effect, but I know we do need to back off from that, I think initially. So again, and plan possibly on bonuses down the road. Uh, as far as the positions, uh, the the police, the half, the half position that we have on that, I think that's definitely something we gotta have. But the other three probably back them out of the budget, just so we know what the numbers are. When we go come back in, revisit, then we can always add to it. We can always increase. I would rather come down the road and say, hey, man, let's give this guy not a three percent bonus, maybe a five percent bonus because he's done such a fantastic job. If our budget calls that we can do that at that point. But uh, that's kind of my position on that. I think uh we need to back off a little bit on uh what we have done. And uh again, plan, have contingencies out there. Plan for things that may not happen. You know, you're hoping you pray it, uh, you know, everything good that happens out there, but it don't always happen that way, just like what we saw this year. And we don't want to come in next year or two, three down the road and have our citizens out there just taking it big time. So we got to protect them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz.
Okay, so I wrote this one down because I have been living on high doses of their flu for a few days, and I just want make sure I get it all out and not ramble. Um, the cost of living today here in Wellington on my latest search was increased by two point three percent from the same time last year. The three percent cola request makes sense. I will support that. Even though we are at two point three here in Wellington, I realize not all residents reside. Not all of our employees reside here in Wellington. Their cost of living is higher elsewhere. Um, but I was surprised when I was looking at everything is we have thirty-four employees that make what is classified as underlivable wage. Thirty-four employees, eight of those employees are part-time. So we have thirty-four employees that make less than seventy thousand dollars a year. Um, and this was a huge gut check for me as I spent my weekend looking at salaries and rates of uh so many missing municipalities. It was, it's insane. Um, so these thirty-four employees, most of them are our boots-on-the-ground employees. They're the ones that process our water. They're the library clerks that work here. Yes, they are part-time. Most of them are. Um, if I were to double that wage, it still fell below that percentage even at part-time. Um, they are the ones mowing the yards in the communities. They also the ones that are coordinating our recreation programs. So when I did that calculation and doubled it, I was able to have a chance to sit down and meet with Patty today and encouraged her that if the six percent is pushed through as far as the wages go, and that's the three percent cola and the three percent merit. Um, I really encouraged her and our director of HR to look at creative and innovative ways to address the pay disparity. Um, that doesn't mean equalization at education certificates. They mean something. Um, so that's simply being competitive with life when we are seeing the massive inflation that we are seeing. Um, we all talk about attracting, keeping employees. Um, my encouragement would be to recognize that we have seen eighteen to up in the upwards of twenty-two percent increases for our upper level management. So what I would say is I would like to see a way that that's addressed to where we are being competitive for even our boots-on-the-ground people. If this three percent merit does go through, I would like to see some of those allocations. If not, most of those allocations start at the bottom and work themselves up so we can equal out pay. Um, in my many days of multiple municipality budgets, um, my explorations, I will agree, the management positions are actually competitive for the amount of money that we bring in in our operating fund compared to municipalities of the same population and size to what they actually bring in in their general fund balances. Um, but the additional item that I did notice was in the differences in their operating general fund budgets for towns of our similar population, um, Berthad's ten point one million. Um, and they're twelve thousand people. Fort Morgan, sixteen million, and they're eleven thousand four hundred population. Sterling, fourteen one million, population thirteen thousand. Superior, their general fund operating budget is forty-three point two million dollars. Um, and they have thirteen thousand people. So us, we have the operating budget by the time we take out all the loans and everything, um, we're at five point seven million. And our population is thirteen thousand. So I'm going to ask, and this is something what I can do, I'm hoping through an amendment. If the board agrees, if we're going to continually move forward and give these promotions and this three percent cola and this three percent merit, and that's going to be a standard, we have to have a way to bring money back into town. There has to be an economic development stability here where we are like, okay, we are taking these economic funds in. We can support regular raises. A five percent raise, if so, so much allows, I would really like to see um at least a hundred thousand of this budget go into economic development so we can actually explore a generalized idea of bringing on someone contracted. That way, if we need to and we figure out that this is just not where we are yet, we can back out of a contract easier than we can erase a government position in our town. If you look at it as contracted, it makes it to where you can set your positions, your standards, what you would prefer economic development go after, what we're not looking to add into our community at this time. But Berthad, their community and development director, um, they have classified business development employees. They sunk two hundred and forty-four K into their budget in twenty twenty-two for economic development. And that did not include a thirty-six thousand pay scale for a community outreach person. Then you look at Fort Morgan, they dropped seventy-five K into a single employee. But you look at their operating funds and they're pulling in an amount that we would really benefit from here in our community. I think it's worth a try. I've asked for it for a few years now. And I would feel way more comfortable approving, moving forward with the raises if we knew we were actively pursuing something that helped bring income back in. Don't get me wrong, property taxes, great. Residents, we're appreciative when you pay your property taxes. We cannot rely on property tax. You can't. You have to have sales tax too, because you'll eventually stop growing. And then what happens? If we don't have sales tax coming in and we don't have someone chasing these contracts and making these connections out and about, we're going to hit a stalemate when we do see development go in on the south side and a possible interchange coming in off the interstate, and they're directly routed down fifty-eight instead of coming up towards Wellington. We will become, our downtown Cleveland will become the north end of Fort Collins. And what that looks like if we don't find a way to nurture and grow it. Because if those development goes in, large business opportunity goes to the south, what are we going to do to compete with large new businesses going in over there? If we don't have someone helping support economic development here, we are going to be the end of North College. So that's my two cents. I asked for the board's support in adding that hundred K to that account because that means we're actually serious. The fifteen K is a drop in a bucket for economic development from pretty much everywhere that I have looked. So, and I know that everyone says it's a start, but that's not even a start. It's not even a start. So that's my, my feedback. I'm thankful to the staff for all of the budget, all of the preparation. I have attended these meetings for close to five years. And this um has been a push of trustee Gators for as long as I have been attending these meetings to is to have this deep in-depth dive. We have figured out so much that has needed to be fixed or adjusted from looking at all of these budgets, the way that it was requested to be looked at. Um, so I'm grateful getting to sit through previous experiences with the budget planning over a Saturday on a weekend compared to taking as much feedback, the budget bonanza, everything else that has come along since then. We definitely have grown. We might not be there yet, but we have grown a long way from there. So that's my ask.
Thank you. Um, thank you for putting the budget together. Thank you for staff for doing the cuts, making things where you needed to. Um, and getting rid of the the wants. I mean, really tightening things up every way we could. Um, I work in an industry where we have skilled people um that I employ underneath me. And I have to pay very competitive wages so they don't go to other shops that are locked down the road or a dealership or go start their own business. I mean, hopefully they will start their own business, but I need to pay them to where they can maybe eventually do that in my industry. Um, and so paying those wages is important and and making sure that they are valued and they that they know that they're valued is hugely important. Um, it's the industry that we're in, and it's it's not, it's a different industry than town government, but it's the same competitiveness that goes into it. There's towns everywhere. Um, there's a select pool of people that are going into that industry, same as mine. Um, and paying them what they're worth for the time and dedication and the overtime that they put in um, needs to be done. I mean, merit is important. Um, we have staff that is more or less understaffed and overworked um, to where we can barely get things done half the time. Patty wears ten, fifteen different hats. Mr. Moose, same thing. I mean, the staff in the back, they're they're doing a lot of things that aren't in their job description because we are spreading themselves thin, and I believe that they deserve to be compensated for their hard work and their dedication to this town. Um, I see no reason to not do cola and merit along with this budget. Um, I I believe that, yeah, I to trustee Teetz's point, it is very important for us to focus on economic development, um, which we are starting to focus on, and that is something that is going to be huge. Um, when we get our water plant completed, the sewer and treatment. Um, and I think that's a big portion of why it would be looking at adding positions to planning to help set things up, lessen the workload in that department so we can get things moving quickly. Um, or quicker uh for us to grow and prosper in that sense. Uh, so that that's where I'm at, and I I appreciate everything that that all of you put into this, the amount of time that we have gone over this. Um, and and yeah, I mean, thank you to trustee Gator for, you know, always wanting to have us go through these budgets and and get these things cleaned up. Um, and Mr. Rhodes for being able to do that. Um, I mean, we are, this is the best budget this town's ever seen by far. Um, it's, it's clean. We're, we're getting there and it's a great place to to start with that cornerstone. So appreciate each and every one of you for that. Um, so that's my comments, and now I'll open it up to the public.
Hello again, Lisa Chollet, same address. Um, first and foremost, I want to point something out from a safe rest of school standpoint. Um, we're a small group. There's five of us. And we've probably done the equivalent of four or five hundred hours worth of work to get to a point to get a grant for the town. And that costs the town nothing. Right? And we're going to get ten thousand dollars towards a bigger plan for the town, and it costs the town nothing. So then your budget, you can figure out whatever that imaginary number is, are people willing to do the work? But in doing that work, we relied heavily on planning and not just director Byrd, but all planning staff to help us. We relied heavily on public works to help us devise a plan and to have a strategy, to have a vision to work for the that will work for this town for the future. So I would encourage you, and that's just a drop in the bucket. I mean, that everybody that works for this town wears a lot of hats and they put their heart and soul into it, and a lot of them live here. And to uh trustee Wigan, with all due respect, and I understand where you're coming from. I'm a fiscally conservative person. But some of these people live here and other people choose to live, to work there. And they also have high property taxes, and if they live here, they're feeling those rate increases, and I think it's unfair to ask a few to take a hit for the many. That's, that just smacks of things that I won't use the word. It just, not a bad word, but you know, it's a political word, so I won't use it. It just, it's it's kind of gross. I think that we should never ask a few handful of people to take a hit for a town of twelve thousand people. And to trustee Teetz, I fully support what she said about economic development. I've talked to several of you about this. If we're not looking to the future and we're not trying to get in the solution, this is a continuous problem. And a lot of towns have economic development that works with And a lot of towns have economic development that works with planning, that understands transportation. They wear more than one role and that's why an investment of a hundred thousand or more is a good idea. Invest, find someone that really cares about the challenge that is Wellington. And then make sure that they're appreciated and we're not always arguing about them taking a hit or attacking them online or any of those other things that we're always supporting those people because they choose to work here. It's an employees market right now. And the last thing I would want to say, and I'm gonna run out of time, but I don't understand the sewer continuing to go in the negative. And I know you can't answer my question, but is this because there was a fault in the Reftalis work that we did that that sewer rate isn't right? I just, something to think about. Quit knocking at me. Thank you.
Okay, don't peek out. First off, I want to thank trustee Teets for bringing up the wages of people on the, on the low end of our scale and being a voice for them because those are also, a lot of those people, I'm guessing, don't, don't have a lot of options. So thanks for looking out for them. Um, in Wellington, there has been a history that's shown us that it's a gamble when it comes to new hires. It's a, a true gamble. And um if we do lose people, we can't afford to have vacancies. But we also can't afford to hire unqualified people just to fill a seat. So if we, if we do lose people, the amount of stress that is already existing in, in staff is going to be increasing. If people can increase their wages by twenty-five percent by driving twenty miles down the road or, and you give them a reason to do it, they're gonna do it. If our people are qualified, we need to keep them. Replacing them is far more expensive than a merit increase in a COLA. And if you evaluate the opinion um and rely on the expertise of Mr. Rhodes, I would ask him what, what his opinion is. I mean, I think everybody on the board really truly values Mr. Rhodes's opinion. Um, and um, that's uh, that's basically it. I, I really think that these COLA and merit increases are important and especially for the people at the low end of the scale. We, um, replacing people is incredibly expensive.
All right, no more further public comment. Uh, may I get a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number fifty-one, twenty twenty-three. A resolution adopting the budget for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year, beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-four and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-four. Estimating the amount of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy based on said budget so adopted. Estimating the amount of money to be derived from other revenue sources, setting forth estimated expenditures for each.
Well, second. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
We're gonna have upcoming for additional discussion.
Oh, yeah. Forgot about that. Sorry.
Yeah, it's all good. Um, so I would like to bring up um for an amendment. Um, one of the items that I had requested, so I know we've talked about pushing the three point seven five positions to discussion. Um, what I'd like to propose is an amendment to the budget to remove the three point seven five in new positions. Um, in, from the current budget and to schedule those to come back to the Board of Trustees for review on our regular meeting on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four for a budget amendment to potentially re-add those positions based on financial, whatever, but it would come back to a date certain for a budget amendment to re-add those positions so we can reevaluate it. But I, so moving to amend the budget to actually physically remove those from the current budget, but to be brought back for a budget amendment on April ninth.
Second.
I believe at this point, um, Mr. Mayor, you should deal with the first motion before you entertain the second motion.
No, it's an amendment to a motion.
Okay, okay.
So now this motion to amend needs to be dealt with.
Yes, so now we as a board need to discuss what we want to do with the motion, then we would vote on whether or not to amend it and then we would move back to.
So just to break this down, we're gonna vote on the amendment to the motion and then we'll vote on the original.
You got it.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
No.
No. So I guess we would be looking for a roll call on the amendment?
Well, I think we can, we can discuss it.
Yeah, we can discuss it first as a board, so everyone can share their thoughts and then we could do a roll call.
Yeah. Start with trustee Teets.
Is this where I ask for my amendment for the hundred thousand dollars?
After. It would be, that would be.
After we finish on this, then you could ask your amendment. Yep.
Got it. Just making sure we're following procedure here. Um, so I, I'll support that. If we're already addressing it and it's coming, it's gonna come back to us again in a review. I don't really have an issue with it being put on hold until we come back at the first quarter and discuss it.
I was talking about contingencies earlier. I think this is a good contingency. I supported.
Mayor, again.
No comment.
Trust Mason.
Uh, I, I suppose just really quickly to comment on trustee Teets's point earlier, I would definitely love to see the board prioritize the economic development this coming year. And I don't know if that means Patty putting us something together in the first quarter that we can come back and address that. I know, I think you had had some plans for Caitlin to uh look at some of that, but I, we, we can talk about that later. Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure I support taking the, these positions off the budget right away. I mean, the fact is, uh, you never know when a good candidate's gonna come along. And if we have somebody that's super qualified, that definitely fits the bill. Uh, we, that's the person we want, right? And we, if we, if we kick that down the curb to say, well, you know, they're not gonna be here or, or, or we, we dismiss somebody just to say, well, you know, because we, we gonna push these positions till April. I, I, I get where the board's coming from in the sense that we want to try to save those dollars upfront, but again, if, if that candidate comes through and we tell them, we're not gonna hire you. I, I think that's a bad idea.
Trustee Daly.
Uh, I think this is a bad idea. Um, same reason that trustee Mason mentioned is when you have a good candidate, you need to move. Not only that, though, is if it's not included in the budget, they can't plan on having that person. They can't plan on starting to recruit. Um, this is almost as bad as not recommending a merit increase. We talked about the value of our employees. Um, so during our budget process, we heard from every single department and there was incredibly compelling reasons as to why those additional positions were needed. From the library, library, no one can take vacation because there's not enough staff to cover it. People come to work potentially sick because of coverage issues. So they're recommending only a point seven five person or, you know, combination of that between multiple people in order to make sure that their quality of life is better and that the services we provide to our uh to our community are better. We talked about the additional parks uh or recreation position and how that's super necessary. Um, every single position that's been brought to us has been incredibly evaluated, so we know exactly what they're doing, what would be planned, exactly why they're needed. It's all been already calculated. Um, so, and this is kind of a conversation to the next, next amendment. It sounds like we're gonna be hearing, which I love economic development. If anybody knows, that's where I want the money. Um, but that hasn't been planned right now. So, I mean, we're talking about planned positions that are already proven and necessary needed and saying, but you can't depend on that. So uh, this is almost as bad as not giving people merits. You're telling them they have to do what they're doing with less people than they actually need. And maybe saying that they aren't worth the, the maximum merit at the same time. That's a double whammy. That's, that's the opposite thing you want to do to promote our staff uh and to make sure they're supported. So I think that that's a horrible idea. Um, that's my comment.
Thank you, trustee Gator. All right, perfect. So I'd just like to read a paragraph to the board from the staff notes under personnel. Four point two five full-time employees FTE are proposed in the budget. With only a point five detective position being fully funded as of January first, twenty twenty-four. The balance of the positions requested will be evaluated after first quarter twenty twenty-four to assure revenue projections support the additional staff. Those positions include planning one and two, one FTE, engineer one to two, one FTE, parks and recreation operation supervisor, one FTE, and library Kirk, one point seven five FTE. I am simply trying, I am simply saying that I want this to come back to the board a hundred percent, which we don't control hiring once it's approved in the budget. Staff is already recommending that these positions not be filled until after the first quarter. I am simply saying I'd like to actually pull it from the budget and then add it back in if it's deemed viable at second quarter. So I'm, I am simply saying I want to actually take this and make this a for sure board action. That is all. And you can read it in your own packets and on page one, 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 twelve.
If I can interject, I actually was, I got up here to say pretty much the same thing trustee Gator just said. We, we, uh, one of the cut rounds, and this might have been a couple of months since we talked about this, but one of the, the budget cut rounds was um our town administrator instructed us that we should put into the budget um, not expecting positions to be filled until the month of June. Can't remember whether it's June first or June thirtieth, but the idea was not in the first quarter, it would come after that. So um in the budget, there isn't money in the budget right now. Actually, if we wanted to fill a position, January one, there's not, there's not the money in the budget to do that, just um, just so you know. So I think that's saying the same thing, but I just want to make sure that was, uh, that was clear. So that would, that would be the difference. I mean, if it stays in the budget, you'd have the authority to hire the position, but not the money to do it. So it's kind of the same thing. We wouldn't uh, we wouldn't be hired. We wouldn't even start recruitment because you're not gonna recruit for a position you don't have the money for. So um, just so everybody, uh, but pretty much said the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Yeah, I mean, I, I would support that amendment, bring it back.
Mr. Rhodes just said that that's what's written in the budget?
Well, it's, I mean, it's written in the budget, but it's still don't have, I guess my question would be.
So I can.
If we, if we bring this back.
I, I can bring clarity because I, so basically what he's saying right now is this, there is not money in the budget to fund the position starting as of January first. That we could, they would not have enough money to employ someone unless they started in April because that's what they're planning for.
Hmm.
They would have the authority starting April one to hire someone and put them in without, I mean, yes, they've said they will bring it back, but they don't have to. They can just hire the position because it's already approved. What I am saying is I want to make sure this comes back to us. And so what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting would pull those positions completely out of the budget, but it's setting them also for, so it's, it's not in limbo. It's not like maybe the board will change and it's also coming back before election. So this board will make that decision as to whether or not they'd be added in. So it's not, there's an election, there's new people, they're gonna say something different. It's literally this board will be bringing back in a budget amendment. Knowing what's coming. And then the budget amendment would be needed because the remaining three quarters of the year that's currently in the budget for those positions would be removed today. And then if we say, yes, we're good, we can put those, then that money would get added back in on April ninth. If that makes sense. So what I'm saying is I want this to be forced to come back to the board. I don't want there to be an option to not come back to the board. I'm just, I would feel more comfortable that we have to see it again and make the decision, looking at, we've seen the whole first quarter, we've done that review of the finances and things and, all right, we're gonna make a decision one way or the other at that point.
Well, not only that, but then the residents can see it as well and see that we're smartly planning.
My, my question would be, if we were to go that route, would it hinder the hiring process or getting things out any differently than it, than the process would already go? If it were, if the amendment was not approved?
So no, it's not gonna hinder the process. My question, though, is when are trustee members being sworn in this for the twenty twenty-four election?
So that will either be if the board elects to conduct a special meeting after the completion of the certification of the election.
Yes.
Which will be fifteen days after election day, which I believe is April the twelfth or thirteenth. Um, so swearing in of the new board members would be the, the earliest that that could occur would be the date that is currently scheduled as the second. Excuse, excuse me, is the work session on the third Tuesday in April of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So there's a, a couple of things there. Um, and, and really, it, it doesn't matter either way to staff. I mean, we have it in the budget. It's whether it stays and we, we are not going to go out and, and try to hire someone before June one. I mean, we are committed to bringing this back to the Board of Trustees in April when we have said that we would. Um, if it's a philosopher, philosophical issue for the Board of Trustees, that they want those, they want us to come and, and ask for those positions again at a later time, then that's the Board of Trustee direction. It will not hinder us if the amendment is passed for our process for recruitment. Um, because we're not gonna do anything until after that discussion happens in April. It doesn't matter. So.
Okay.
Uh, my, my, my only concern is that, that, the, the only thing I'm concerned with is if, if this, this board is making that decision, a brand new board is not going to understand all of this perhaps. I don't know that.
Why I said April ninth.
Oh, ninth. I thought you said nineteen.
No, 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 ninth.
I do apologize.
I, I said that intention because this board needs to make that decision. I do not want to go into the next board. I agree.
Perfect, perfect. I thought you said nineteen and that's why I asked. Okay, thank you.
I have another, I have another follow-up question or comment. I'm, I'm, I understand that logistically, this is the same thing that's already built in. But what it is also is a slap in the face saying that we don't trust staff to do what they said. And it's a slap in the face saying, I get another opportunity to not give you the staff you need. And I understand that's not how it's written, but I'm telling you, that's how you hear it. Okay? I just need to make that very clear.
Thank you. Yeah, um. Yeah, that's basically what I, what I gathered there was it was not acting in good faith. Um, so yeah, I won't support that amendment. Um, okay, Ms. Clerk, please move forward with the roll call.
To the amendment, um, motioned by trustee Gator and seconded by trustee Wiegand. Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
No.
Trustee Mason.
No.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend McDonald.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
No.
With a vote of four against and three in favor, the motion for the amendment fails.
Thank you. Further board discussion on the original motion. Trustee Teets.
I would like to make an amendment that we add the additional hundred thousand to seek a contracted employee for economic development to the planning for twenty twenty-four budget.
Trustee Wiegand.
Second.
Oh. I guess we did need a second. Uh, do you have a comment?
Discussion on that? Nothing?
Yes, I think uh if we don't have our development planned out, if we are not really looking seriously at this, uh, we're doing a disservice to the town. I know when we did the original uh Main Street uh, hiring uh with the person that was supposed to be fifty percent uh Main Street, fifty percent economic development. Uh, I don't think we've really got our bang for the buck out of that. And I think we need to get somebody in there that's really directed into bringing business into this town. Uh, if we don't have sales tax and we sure in heck can't depend upon marijuana for everything. Uh, we need to get some good business in here and we need to get knowledgeable business or people that know how to bring it in. So if that's what it takes, I think that's something we should be looking. So if that's what it takes, I think that's something we should be looking at seriously. I don't know if it'll be in this budget or not, but I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend.
Trustee Wiegand, thank you so much for mentioning the marijuana tax. I am not up for election coming up, so I'm comfortable talking about this. I think that a really good temporary solution is looking at leveraging that, that sales tax revenue to offset the direct expense occurred in the community, and that's the increased expense to our law enforcement services. And so by leveraging that marijuana sales tax to offset that expense for providing public safety may provide a little bit of wiggle room in the budget to help support something like economic development in the community. So I think that your suggestion for looking at opportunities to help increase sales revenue is smart. And I applaud the opportunity to increase economic development opportunities for the Wellington community. So that's my two cents on the subject.
Trustee Mason.
Personally, I think I'd, I'd still go with what I mentioned to Ms. Garcia earlier. I, I would like to see this come back as a work session item in Q one. I suspect we would have to make a budget amendment and potentially switch some other priorities around and that sort of thing. But I think it's absolutely worth a discussion. I just don't know that that discussion is appropriate for this budget right now. I very much want to see it come back. But again, I think we're going to have to consider other priorities and, and, and see if there's something we can do to fit in that hundred thousand dollars if that's what it's going to be. So.
Trustee Daley.
I think economic development is one of the most important things that Wellington is behind on. I also understand our water issue concerns right now and, and when we get to take off. I think we need to be planning for that now. So when we are open for business, we already have projects lined up. With that said, and I will always support economic development efforts. I would love to see this come back as a potential amendment in the future. We just, three out of seven were considering not not ensuring three, three point seven five positions that have already been proven are planned. They know exactly what these people would be doing and they want and need their specific. And like I said, compelling reasons why, sorry, my Google's talking to me. Why those positions are needed and for what? I would love to see what that hundred thousand dollars does. Does it hire a firm that completes what tasks, that has what deliverables, that will have what returns? I want it and I want that economic development position. I want resources. I want a consulting firm. I want all those things, but I want to know what they are before I throw a vague amount at it. Maybe it needs to be more than that. Maybe it needs to be less, but what exactly are we paying for? And I think it's irresponsible to prove something that we don't know exactly what the money would be exactly used for. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of this amendment, but I am absolutely in favor of us looking at this immediately in the new year to determine what we can afford, how it would be used.
Thank you, trustee Gator.
All right. So appreciate you thinking about solutions. Right? I've, I've been focused very much on the expenses side and looking at the numbers. And again, there, there's two sides of every equation, right? There's the expense side and there's the revenue side. And I appreciate that you're looking at some options on that. I know my concerns have continued to be on the economic development is what is it actually going to do? What I've seen, and again, very little experience, but in the time I've been on the board is we've gotten a lot of reports stating a lot of information that we have not done anything with. And so my concern is when I'm looking at our budget and looking at, again, as we're talking about going on one point five million dollars negative next, you know, we're twenty three, twenty five, so years budget from now in our sewer fund, I have concerns because right now a lot of our solutions come to actually putting loans from other funds, which our general fund can support, right? The hundred thousand of the general fund is a drop in the bucket for where we're at. But when we're taking a million dollars a year out of the general fund in grants to the water and sewer fund, they're still going negative. And then we're having to do loans, that balance that we have of seven million dollars is going to disappear really quickly. And so my concerns come in that I am very concerned about spending, expending more funds when I feel like we still haven't gotten a handle on decreasing the funds that we are expending right now. And so that would be my concern with approving that with the economic development. I mean, it could work out, but typically my expectation would be that's a couple of years down the road that we'd start to see results from that. And my concerns are how do we keep from going bankrupt? You know, next budget year after this. So that would be my concern with adding that in right now. I think it's a good conversation to have. And again, my opinion is one out of seven. So I think that we can have conversations about what it is.
So, and I know it feels like we would be two to three years down the road before we would see any kind of reward from this, but we have a building sitting empty right now that could take on business. We have businesses leaving town. We've lost three businesses in the last nine months here in Wellington, nine, ten, eleven, eleven months. The economic development aspect of that could also be engaging with those businesses to possibly find different locations. If their leases aren't not being met on time, you could literally see instant rewards. I hate to call sales tax a reward, but you could instantly see reward from this. We have developable, developable parcels out on the north side of town. There is possibility to build right now for commercial aspects or move into businesses that are evacuating their leases. There is still possibility without waiting two to three years from the benefit of what someone with economic education and connections could mean for this town. So I do not feel that it is fair to give it that, oh, we're going to see this reward in two to three years. Because I truly think if we had the right person or the right company, I mean, Baker Tilly has economic development and we already work with them. So they already have a well-rounded educational basis of our finances. So we're combating some issues already. But if we don't at least explore the idea, we are not serious about bringing sales tax revenue in. We're, we're dancing around the fact that we know that this is very well possibly an issue that is easily addressed and could be fixed. And we could see building, we could see additional tap fees going into those sewer funds. It's not something that, it's not a two to three year reward on this side of things. I see possibility now for some of the areas of town, if not taking over properties that are coming up for lease. But building, I mean, I've seen some pretty miraculous builds go up very quickly if someone's determined enough. I just, I don't want to sell ourselves short because we're waiting on a possibility when we could possibly be working on this immediately.
Trustee Teets, I don't, I, I just want to clarify. I think what you're trying to say is not reward, but that this position would yield a high rate of return.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I did, that's what I was, that's what I think you were trying to say, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think this is not the night to do it, but I think we definitely need to bring this back first quarter and have an honest discussion about it. Doing a move with that amount of money at the bottom, bottom of the ninth isn't, isn't the best. I think we need more information, figure out how much money, what we're talking about. Do we go to a firm? Do we go with a person instead of just throwing it into the budget last minute? Wonderful idea. I think everybody at this table understands that economic development is going to be our number one factor and is our number one factor for this town to be successful. So thank you for bringing it up, trustee Teets. But yeah, I think, I think it's something we need to talk about in the first quarter next year. Um, that being said, I think everybody spoke. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call?
To the amendment motioned by trustee Teets and seconded by trustee Wiegand. Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Love the idea, but no at this time.
Trustee Daley.
No, can't wait for it to come back.
Trustee Gator. No. Mayor Pretend McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
No.
With a vote of four again, four against and three in favor, the motion fails and the amendment is lost.
Thank you. Back to board discussion. Well, every time, the only one person's talked. Trustee Wiegand, do you have anything to say?
Nothing to add.
Perfect. Mayor Pretend. Trustee Mason. Trustee Daley.
Nothing, thanks.
Trustee Gator.
So the only things, thank you for entertaining the amendments. I did have other comments that had to do with the main motion. I, we've had a lot of conversation about, okay, what is our pay? What does our pay need to be? I think that as I look at it, we have to be cognizant of who we are as a town. I work for a small business. I know that as much as I could go in and say, hey, I've got this experience. I could go in my boss and say I'm worth all this money. I know for a fact they cannot afford to hire me and keep me for that amount of money. I choose to work there because I value the vision and the goal of where the company is going, not because, well, you can pay me more. I could go somewhere else and I could get more money. We keep talking about, well, we need to, we need to, we need to pay the same as other people. We need to face the reality of we don't have an eight hundred million dollar budget like the city of Fort Collins. We don't have the budget of the city of Loveland. We don't even have the budget of cities that are similar size to us like Berthet. Yet we keep coming back to, we need to be paying this high rate. And yes, I agree, we need to try and find competent people, but we need to understand you can afford what you can afford. If I make thirty thousand dollars a year, I can't afford a Tesla. As much as I might love to drive a Tesla, as much as it might be a great car, my finances don't support that. My concerns is that if we're always looking at, okay, we just, we, we've got to just pay top dollar, top dollar. We got to match top dollar. We're going to end up to the point where we're, it's great that we're thirty five percent now. Where does that number reside? When we're three years, four years down the road, we're constantly saying we have to beat top dollar. We have to compete with Fort Collins. And now where's our budget to fix the roads, to fix the other things? We, we've got the great staff, but do we have money to actually do the work that the staff needs to do? That is my concern. It, when we talk about, we need to be competitive. We do not have the resources that they have. We need to pay a reasonable wage and looking at the wages, I agree with trustee Teets. It's concerning to me. We've had conversation about our water operators and the wastewater operators that make sure that water, those are among our lowest paid staff in the entire town. And when you look at where the raises have gone, the large raises have not gone to those positions. So I agree that that, there's a concern there, but we also have a lot of positions that in our town that make a very good salary. That may, they, maybe they can get more elsewhere. That's quite true. But if we're just focusing all of our time and all of our resources on how do we just pay people more money so they don't leave? That is a reality for every organization. People get paid well. Someone else comes in and says, hey, we really need what you have, so we're willing to pay you more than someone else. And if, if that is just our concern is always just, we need to pay more, pay more, pay more. We're going to get ourselves in a position where we've got a lot of highly paid people that they don't, we don't have enough people to fill other roles. And we have overworked people, which is kind of the situation we're in now. So that is my concern is that we are focusing on trying to match people with resources that we don't have.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Yeah, when I, when I think about that, I mean, yeah, the merit and cola is an increase. I think it's forty thousand dollars difference in the budget in total. Um, if we go with the merit. Yeah, there, our staff, we do have to compete with those larger municipalities, unfortunately. It's kind of like I look back at my service when I was, when I was a firefighter. When I started the department, it was a springboard department. So people would come, we would spend money on them, and then they would leave. And it was a circular door and it cost the department a lot of money to do that. And I do not want that to happen here. And I want to minimize that to the best of our capabilities by doing the merit and cola. We've seen that our retention has gone up over the years. And over the years that it's gone up, we have done merit and cola. Our staff compared to other municipalities are on par, if not under what other municipalities pay of equal size. So I think what we're doing for our region, for our people speaks volumes to keep them here and show them that we honor their work ethic. I mean, to be part of Wellington, to be on the board, to work for the town, it takes grit and we all put in a lot of time. Staff all puts in a lot of time. And I believe that that, that earns merit without effect. Um, or without a doubt, without a fact. But yeah, so that, that's, that's why I'm behind it. I want to make sure that, that we can retain what we have and maintain the quality that we have. If we can't pay those wages, we're going to people that are less qualified and make more mistakes and cost us more in the long run. Um, so just an important thing in, in my opinion to, to get this done. So with that being said, I think move on to a, a roll call, Mr. Clerk, or.
I have a quick comment on that.
Go for it.
I want to remind everybody that there was a compensation study completed. You know, the pay that people receive is not just arbitrarily assigned. There was a, a study done, you know, considering our region, experience, roles, everything like that to put people, it, you know, it's not a choice to say I'm going to pay this group of people less or this group of people more. It is based on a specific study of similar positions and those kind of things. So when you're saying, and then, and it was a significant effort, a lot of us highlighted and, and those changes of pays that occurred, part of that study, and that's why we continue to want to do those studies every two years. So to say you're not receiving some amazing pay to keep you here, we're saying we're paying people, you know, what they're valued and what is fair. We're absolutely not more than those other communities in a lot of cases. And then to say you're being paid what's fair and we're giving you what you worth based on how hard, how good you do your job, we're going to reward you based on that. So I just want to make it really clear. It's not just arbitrarily decide who gets paid more or less. It is based on studies and positions, roles, experience, all those kinds of things.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Wait, we're all allowed to have a final comment, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I would like my final comment, please.
Go for it.
I am very disappointed and honestly, I can say, since I have been serving as trustee, this is the first time that I've actually walked away from a vote like that disappointed. So I'm typically one of those people that vote doesn't go your way, you deal with it and you move on. It's, it's sad to think that there was, there is an opportunity to fix some of the very issues that people are saying is an issue. And there was an opportunity to address it. And while we might not have all the answers, that's one of those things you can move forward. But we had just voted to have trust in the generalized idea that when three point seven five employees were coming back to us, we voted to say, yes, that's okay. We trust majority, trust to let it come back to the board without having to readdress it. But now the same exact people that voted for those three point seven five are the exact same ones that had voted to say, oh, no, we want to wait because we need more information. That part of that just didn't, doesn't make sense to me. Not a surprise, but doesn't make sense to me. But at the end of the day, I am grateful for the consideration and being able to look at things moving forward. I will make a statement in saying that in my discussion and meeting earlier today with Patty and the Human Resources Director, that study was based off of population. Um, it wasn't based off of the income coming into the communities. So like I said earlier, Fort Morgan, you're looking at communities that have forty six million dollar operating fund budgets at our same population. So it's based off of a generalized statistic for all of Colorado. Doesn't specifically deal straight with what we're making in our budget. So other than that, I really do hope that it does come back to us and that we do address the economic development side of things. Cause there is a, a whole other list of things that that could also adjust and benefit moving forward when we're looking at development agreements next year as well.
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Teets. Thank you, trustee teats. All right, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
To the original motion for approval by Mayor Proton McDonald and seconded by trustee Mason. Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
No.
Trustee Wigan.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. With four in favor, three against, the motion carries and resolution number fifty one dash twenty twenty three is approved.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to take a five minute recess. The Milton border trustees on December twelfth, twenty twenty three, back in session, time being nine ten P M. You want to make it?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item number five, that's resolution number fifty three, twenty twenty three. The statement of work with uh, Laramie County Sheriff's Office up to number three.
A second.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Daly. Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Um, the motion carries unanimously with the exception of trustee Daly, who's not seen and uh, the agenda is amended.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title of item now, E three?
Resolution number fifty three dash twenty twenty three, a resolution considering the twenty twenty four statement of work and budget agreement by and between the county of Laramie and the town of Wellington.
Thank you, sir. This will be a presentation by Sheriff Fan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, trustees, Patty. I, I appreciate the consideration, but I'm staying to the end anyway, because I have to corral your town attorney about an issue, so don't be leaving.
All right.
Sorry, you thought you were going home early, but since I'm here, we're going to chat, we're just a little bit here, okay? Nothing bad, okay? I'm actually on a mission to help the fire department a little bit. We do collaborate on occasion, so. Let's see if this works. Okay. I appreciate the opportunity. I promise not to take as much time. But I do want to go over, because things really haven't changed since our presentation back in September uh, of this year. So just to recap, I appreciate the collaboration, the work that we have with Wellington and I appreciate the opportunity to come to you back in September and talk about uh, the budget, uh, the possibilities of budget decreases, budget increases, what that looks like. What we have heard and, and from your support and what we've heard is that our scope of work hasn't changed and I, Mr. Clerk, I can't change this part of it. It's okay. The, basically the scope of work doesn't really change. What you're going to see is you see the same personnel and same staffing that you saw here. So the impact to the town won't, isn't, won't be changing at all. The only change is the increase of the one halftime investigator F T E. So, so the average hours will be a hundred and sixty, it's like having a one full-time investigator. Now, it's not going to be like Jimmy's your person or Sarah's your person, but we will come back and report to you the, the hours that investigation puts in every month. So, got that, Sergeant Cherry? Okay, perfect. It's great to have good people. As you all talked about. So here's kind of where we're at with the budget for this year. Um, breaking down, I just wonder, one point nine eight million dollars for the years proposed and um, half of that increase, it's about a hundred ninety, a hundred ninety seven thousand dollar increase. Half of that is due to the cost of the halftime F T E and the other half of that is like what you guys all just talked about, cost of living and expenses going up and wanting to pay good people so we don't lose them to Fort Collins, because we do lose them to Fort Collins as well. So I am here for, that's the end of my presentation. I'm open for questions, so.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that the staff that you guys do provide us here in town as far as L C S O goes is top notch. I know we lost some to their shift selections. But I'm very excited to get to meet the new ones that are getting ready to join us here in Wellington because honestly, the last ones that had gotten picked were amazing and I'm really excited to get to meet our new locals that will be cruising around here and yeah, no, I wish them welcome if they are paying attention or watching and I'm excited to have this point five F T E added for the investigation side of it.
Trustee Gator.
Switching it up on us. That was good. I know, he was looking the other way and I, I thought I heard daily and I was like, I'm like, no, he's talking to me. Um, so I, the only two issues I'm going to bring up, the same two I bring up every, well, actually one I bring up every time. You and I have had many conversations, I appreciate the work, the indirect costs. Um, that's just something I know you're committed to working through that with us. It's, it's really a county commissioner thing. Um, that just, again, it's like an entire salary position. Um, but I'd love to see that be able to get addressed. The other thing too, that I'd like to have more conversations on is exactly how like when we because I know we keep having conversations about adding new units and like a new corporal or a new deputy. And we keep pushing it off and pushing it off, but I imagine sometime the next two or three years, we're actually kind of like, okay, we're adding it. And so into that comes the whole vehicle purchase and equipment and what does that look like? And I know that's a concern for me because we then pay the full price upfront and then we continue to lease it, but we don't own the vehicle. So I prefer, and again, it's always one of those things, I prefer to kind of have those conversations of if down the road, things change, have those conversations when things are great and there's no need for a change. That way down the road, if for whatever reason on either side, there's like someone's like, there needs to be a change, it doesn't blow up. So I would just, I'd love to see that conversation maybe start happening over the next couple of years so we can figure out, hey, what does that look like with vehicles? Does Wellington have some ownership or things like that? But those are the only two things, they're future conversations, but I appreciate your willingness to have them.
Absolutely.
Trustee Wigan.
Thank you. Want to thank you guys for your uh, extremely professional uh, work that you guys do. I mean, it's not if, but probably when we're going to have something bad happen out here, it's just the nature of the business and I am extremely confident that with what I've seen with your training, with your facilities, with the staff, everything about the sheriff's department, we've got top notch people here. So that should give our town a lot of confidence and uh, a sense of security. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mason.
No questions. We've seen this presentation before and I just want to thank you, Sheriff, for uh, uh, coming up here today. And, and, and I think everybody on this board certainly is in approval of uh, everything you guys do and, and wonderful job out there. So uh, yeah, very, very excited.
Mayor Protem.
I appreciate the presentation and your impact has exceeded beyond Laramie County. So thank you for your commitment and services. And not just Laramie County, but beyond.
Thank you, that means a lot. Thank you, appreciate that.
Go, keep going.
No, no, I was like, I didn't catch all of it when you're like, let's fund the police department through marijuana taxes. I thought, that's kind of ironic. That's not. There's a concept, totally.
Trustee Gator, sorry. There was one thing I forgot to mention. Um, tying, tying into what trustee Teets had said, one of the things I'd like to, that we haven't done is, you know, because I know every time we have a shift change, there's new people that would come in. It would be awesome if we could maybe have one of our meetings where we have all of the Wellington deputies, captain, kind of everybody just come in and just you know, meet all the people. I, generally throughout the course of a couple of years, I do get to meet them here and there, but it would be awesome maybe if we could make that work to haul them all in here for meetings.
Probably the easiest request I've had all week long. Yes.
Is that their way to do it where it's uh, like a social setting? If we did like a, a dinner and work session meet and greet with all of the additional ones coming on, that way we're at least feeding them and getting to sit and chit chat and meet with them as well?
I think that's a discussion we can have, for sure. Yeah. The culture that you guys have is incredible. I mean, I would imagine there's departments out there following your lead that you have done through your entire department. I mean, you, everybody that we have in Wellington. I mean, the culture's incredible. Um, great guys, they're here to serve us. Um, they're here to just be part of the community and not just enforce the laws. And I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't have words for it. Corporal Baker has been incredible. Sergeant Cherry's been incredible. The outreach, the things that they do. Um, yeah, keep it up.
Thank you, your words honor us.
Keep it up. Um, yeah, and I'm, I'm in favor of, of the budget, the way that it's presented. Obviously, you know, the concerns with the stuff Gator brought up, that's trustee Gator, sorry. Um, we all know. So, yeah, and then, yeah, I think it's a great idea to also meet everybody too. Yeah, so that's, that's where I'm at. I will move on to public comment. Going once, going twice, going three times, sold. Okay. May I get a motion on this item?
Move that we approve resolution number fifty three dash twenty twenty three, a resolution considering the twenty twenty four statement of work and budget agreement by and between the county of Laramie and town of Wellington.
Second.
Perfect. Do we have any further discussion?
I have one question, or actually it's more of a request. I know that we are strapped for cash in our budget and what I would like to see is we've been having discussion of the one F T E for the community service officer um, to connect with people out here in the community and be kind of the boots on the ground face of the, the connections of youth specifically. Um, I would like to, if we are coming back that first quarter to address where we are sitting financially, I would like to also address at that time, what bringing on that one additional F T E, community service officer would look like. Even if it's for the last quarter of the year to transition into it, a half of the year to transition into it. Something along those lines. You have to look at the cost of replacing public toilets. The cost of replacing parks that are being destroyed by some of our youth that have free time during the summer hours. If we can kind of look at that offset cost of what it's costing us to replace parks and stuff like that for one C S O to navigate around the community. I'd like to see what that looks like, if that is a possibility and you guys are open to it.
All, all in favor of bringing that down the road? Yeah. Perfect. Added. Uh, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously and resolution number fifty three dash twenty twenty three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm honored to keep the collaboration going. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Yes.
All right, um. Let me get my head straight here. Okay, Mr. Clerk, may you, please read the title for item E four.
Certainly, Mayor Shosse, resolution number fifty two dash twenty twenty three, resolution levying general property taxes for the taxable year twenty twenty three to defray costs of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty twenty four and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Uh, this will be a presentation for Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor Board. Uh, I'll keep this brief. This is the resolution where the, uh, the mill rate is set for the year. This year is a little unusual in two respects. One of them is that the, the mill rate is actually dropping. Um, for the current year, it was thirteen point oh nine six. Uh, but in this year, we paid off a very old general obligation bond debt service. And that, that dropped zero point six five seven uh, mills for uh, a rate now of twelve point four three nine. So that was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar uh, reduction in the mill rate just because of the uh, lapsing of that, um, that bond issue from from way back when. So that's, that's one difference. The, the other difference is I have an assessed valuation plugged in there. That's what the county assessor's office gave us uh, back in August. However, as you know, there was some recent legislation that uh, is going to change this. So uh, this very well may change in the future, but in order to um, um, keep everything straight and orderly, we're, we're going, we, we're asking that the resolution be adopted with the assessed valuation that we have. The county assessor has said that on the third, they'll, um, they'll update this, so we may uh, need to bring it back in the future as well. Um, but that's, that's the other change here. The assessed valuation you see in here may change in the near, uh, near future. Um, but that uh, that is uh, what this one is for and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem. Trustee Mason. Trustee Wigan. Trustee Gator. Trustee Teets.
Nope.
All right. Now I'll open up for public comment. No public comment. All right. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Make a motion, we approve resolution number fifty two, twenty twenty three, a resolution levying general property taxes for the taxable year twenty twenty three to defray costs of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty twenty four and ending December thirty first of twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Any further comment? No. Mr. Clerk.
I do.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I just wanted to make sure to clarify something in case anyone is confused. Um, while I disagreed with our budget, that's the way this works. We each have an opinion, there's seven of us, we vote. And then once that decision is made, we move forward with the decision that's been made by the board. So I'm fully supportive of the approving the, the levy based on what the board has approved. So it's not a matter of, well, why did you agree with one and voting against on the other? Um, the decision's been made, this is the process we follow. So just in case anyone's confused, I'm fully supportive of this now that the board has said this is going to be our budget. Because again, that's how our process works. We have opinions, we vote, a decision's made and we move on. So just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, trustee Gator. All right, no more board discussion. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously and resolution number fifty two dash twenty twenty three is approved.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E five?
Ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty three, an emergency ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities of the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty four and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes will present.
Mayor Board, thank you. This is the uh, the, the third resolution or ordinance uh, related to the budget. What, what this one does is essentially it, it gives us the authority, it appropriates the dollars, gives us the authority to cut checks uh, essentially. So the budget's been adopted, um, but it gives us the authority to uh, cut the checks because of the appropriation. Um, it is an emergency ordinance because, because we had, we had an extended budget review period this year, partly because I, I've been new and so we've uh, taken, uh, wanted to take time to go over a, all of the numbers uh, from past years and that sort of thing as we've done. Um, and we just wanted to have an abundance of transparency and a, and an abundance of opportunity for there to be those weigh-in. So what that is, is it, it, it pushed this evening into December. And if, if I could have our town attorney explain what an emergency ordinance is, he could do a better job of that than I can.
And usually we do try and avoid emergency ordinances when possible. The main difference between an emergency ordinance and a standard ordinance, that a standard ordinance doesn't take effect for thirty days after it's adopted. And so in the case of this, usually the budget process would be passing this ordinance in November. So the appropriations to begin January first would be well outside of that thirty day period. Due to Prop HH, due to the special legislative session, due to a lot of things, this got pushed into December. And uh, Wellington's town code has a unique provision that requires this specific ordinance to be an ordinance. Under state statute, it could be a res- uh, ordinance or a resolution. Our town code is just, it's our town code and uh, the, the general assembly when they passed the, the bill in the special session, didn't consider Wellington's town code necessarily when they're changing some dates. Um, this has complied with all the standard notice requirements, everything that would, would require of a normal, of a normal ordinance and normal appropriations ordinance in this process. Um, it just needs to be adopted now as emergency so that it goes into effect and on January first, the town can keep paying its bills.
Thank you. I think trustee Gator mentioned doing this last meeting, possibly having to maybe do an emergency ordinance.
Yes, I had brought it up in relation to the licensing, because we were trying, staff was trying to get it in by January first. So I had brought this up as an option to have that conversation, but get it in by the first.
Thank you. Um, okay. Questions? We'll start with Trusty Teets.
I don't have any.
Okay, Trusty Wigan.
Nope.
Mayor Proten. Trusty Mason. Trusty Gator.
Okay, um, really, actually, hopefully, the question is pretty simple. So I knew that we uh, have the loan of the six million dollars in here, which I cannot tell you how much I appreciate. This is the way that we were doing things. There have been so many times in the history of the town where money has been taken from one place to another place, and no one knows how or why or when, or so I appreciate the process. Thank you very much. Um, the question that I have is, do we have the ability to set when that repayment starts? Or does it need to be the year of twenty-twenty-five? Reason being, we keep talking about twenty-twenty-five is probably going to be a really rough year. Is it going to be a problem if we say, starting twenty-twenty-six? I mean, if things are great, we can always start repaying it sooner. But is there a problem if we say, we're going to start the ten years starting as of twenty-twenty-six?
That that wouldn't be a problem. That's board discretion. It it's at some point, the raw water reserve needs the money back.
Yes.
So that was my suggestion, twenty-twenty-five, but the board could change that.
Okay. Um, so that was my only, and then the other piece, I wanted to make sure I know this isn't budget, but in some of the other projections, you had had the repayment of this actually coming out of the operations fund rather than out of the impact fees fund. I just want to make sure that when we're recording this, because the loan is going from the raw waters reserve into the impact fee reserve, that it's the impact fee fund that is repaying the loan, not the operations fund. I know, I know it's all one big fund, but there actually is significant difference because when we look at operations, that is funded by residents and rates, whereas the impact fund is funded by impact fees for building. Does that make sense?
It it does. And yeah, if if I had the debt service coming from the wrong reserve, then I'll need to look at that. Because, yeah, it's it's the raw water fund, um, loaning to the impact fee uh, reserve fund. So that was would where it would come back from to be paid back. So.
Okay, I I just wanted to confirm. I assume that was probably the case, and we just got it in the wrong line. So I just wanted to make sure that was.
Appreciate you bringing that up. I will double check on that.
So perfect. So once we have a motion, I will move to amend it to adjust. I I mean, does the board feel comfortable with twenty-twenty-six? Do we prefer twenty-twenty-seven? I think, I figure that gives us at least, because if we do twenty-twenty-five, good, bad, or otherwise, we got to start paying it twenty-twenty-five. If we say twenty-twenty-six and all's good, we can start paying it early, but it gives us at least a year to make sure that we're.
You could always decide to move it back up if an opportunity came up.
Are you going to say something, Dan?
After you continue, I decided you're good.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with setting it at a later date, just knowing what we're looking at going into twenty twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, that way, if we do set it as later date, do we have to come back and do another order if we set it at a later date? Or we can just keep moving forward with it the way it is?
Do you mean, do you need to adopt a different ordinance? No, you can amend this order.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, public comment. No public comment. May I get a motion? On this item?
So question for Dan, can I move with the amendment in the motion, or do I need to make the motion first and then amend it?
Uh, no, in the in the main motion, you can.
I can make the amendment. Perfect. All right, I'd like to move to approve ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two-three, an emergency ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities of the town of Wellington, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, with the amendment that the loan that's authorized in the amount of six million dollars from the raw water reserve in the water fund to the impact fee reserve in the same fund to be repaid without interest and equal payments of six hundred annually over a period of ten years will start in twenty-twenty-six.
My second.
Any further comments from the board? Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Proten McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and ordinance number twelve dash twenty-two-three is approved with the stated amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E six?
Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-two-three, resolution in the town of Wellington, Colorado, approving a professional services agreement with Hinkle and Company, PC, to provide independent professional auditing services to the town.
Mr. Rhodes will present.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The proposal before the board uh, this evening is for audit services for the years twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four. Uh, for those that may be uh, uh, listening online or in the audience, just to explain, that may sound unusual because we're about ready to finish twenty-twenty-three. So normally, we would be getting ready to audit twenty-twenty-three. Uh, in this case, we are behind um, in in our audits. Twenty-twenty-one, let me start with that, is nearly complete. Um, there's one remaining issue. Since that audit is two years old, I feel like I need to explain that one a little bit. Um, there's one remaining issue uh, that I'm working on with the uh, the auditor. Um, we had a, we had an auditor for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Um, they're almost complete with twenty-twenty-one. The only issue left is there are um, the number, there, there's a issue with reconciling the numbers for governmental capital assets. So the streets we drive on, the parks, um, this building, uh, governmental assets that are not in an enterprise fund, for instance, those go on the balance sheet. And the number that the previous auditors had uh, for net assets, for those types of assets, um, is actually less than what we are showing in our depreciation and fixed asset schedules. And the auditors could not reconcile that. They gave that to me. I tried, and we just, I couldn't reconcile it either. So we're not sure where those auditors came up with that number. Our our current auditors checked with them, and they were not able to resolve that with our past auditors. Uh, so we're working on resolving that issue. It's the last issue. It's not a high-risk issue. It's just an accounting issue that has to be resolved before they can, they can finalize the numbers. Um, so it it it's done. Other than that, um, that's twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-two, the the firm that we currently have, even though their contract was twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, it it's a small firm. They have two professional staff. Um, one of them has, uh, one of those two has moved recently to a different state, uh, still works with the firm, but in a different state. Uh, so they've just been upfront with me that it's going to be a while before they can finish twenty-twenty-two. Um, so uh, we ended up making the decision to do a request for proposal for services for twenty-twenty-two and then add in the year that we're about ready to close twenty-three and then and then twenty twenty-four in the future. So with that kind of complicated background, I felt that needed to be uh, needed to be said since we are are behind there. We ended up getting proposals from three firms. Uh, one of the firms, uh, we dropped out fairly early on because they they had very, very little experience. Actually, almost no experience. It seemed like a new firm. Most of the experience was one person with a previous firm. Um, so we were looking for more experience than that. So we looked really closely at uh, at two firms and uh, did a decision matrix that was included in the staff report where we looked at several elements that are typical to look at when you're reviewing these kind of professional services. Um, so we we did the scoring, uh, the town administrator, deputy town administration, myself reviewed that. And then we brought it to the finance committee and got unanimous support from that committee as well. Uh, what it came down to, in in most respects, the two firms were similar as far as their their audit approach was fine. Um, their understanding of the scope of engagement, they all, they both had adequate staff sizes as far as, as far as that goes. One had fifty-five audit staff, which is um, very good. The other one had the twenty-eight. So much bigger than the um, than than the firm that we currently have. And again, not saying anything about the firm we currently have. It's just a smaller firm, so there um, there are more challenges staffing audits. Um, where the two audit firms differed a little bit was um, the the firm that we recommended, um, the Hinkle firm um, had seemed to have more experience, at least that they they expressed in their uh, their proposal with Colorado towns uh, similar uh, to Wellington. And interestingly, they had some experience helping towns catch up if they were a little behind. So that they they specifically put that in their proposal, so that 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 was good. Uh, but one of the key things that we looked at was um, one of the firms proposed a hundred and twenty hours for the audit, and Hinkle proposed two thirty-six, almost double. Um, and just from from my experience, I, very long time ago, I started my career as as an auditor of towns and um, school districts and various governmental type agencies. So I have a feel for it. And a hundred and twenty hours, given all of the elements that go into an audit, if you're going to, if you're going to do it well and a, and I don't know that, I don't know the the firm um, that proposed under twenty hours. Maybe they've got a plan I've just never heard of. But um, it's, uh, there's a, there's a lot that goes into it. They do an internal control process where they uh, they check the the town's internal controls. Uh, there's the initial interim testing of transactions where they they pull a sample of payroll transactions and accounts payable transactions and revenue receipts and do uh, testing based on those samples to 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 see how things are and then look further if if something comes up in the sample. Um, and then there's the field work itself where they they come out and and this particular firm um, is, did say they would be coming out. They would meet with us personally. There's a lot that's done on online, but they they did, uh, they're in Inglewood. So they they said they would come on uh, onsite as well. Um, so I I found the audit, the the audit hours that they proposed was um, much more realistic, I thought. Uh, now, the, they are a higher dollar point. I I will say it it's less than what I budgeted, but it's, uh, it turned out, I I budgeted seventy-five thousand initially, and it came in a little under that, sixty-eight thousand or so, I think. Um, but still, it's higher than the other firm. But if you look at the um, the dollars per hour uh, there for professional services, their dollars per hour um, was was quite a bit better. I think it was a hundred and forty-two dollars an hour versus two hundred dollars an hour for the other firm. So it just seemed like it was a better uh, a better price point for the services. And that that's an average. It would be all the way from the partner that would make more to the, to the staff accountant that's in the field that would make uh, less than that. But as an average for the services, that seemed like a more realistic uh, number. Um, so the the money is budgeted for it. Um, it actually came in a little under budget, and that was one of the budget cuts you thought a little bit earlier was we were able to reduce the audit line just a little bit uh, because of that. Uh, so that's that's our recommendation. The finance committee supported it, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trusty Mason.
No question.
Trusty Gator.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because you did mention that they would be on site, because I know this was a question that came from the finance committee. So for the rest of the board that wasn't there, um, actually, our new member that we just pointed to the finance committee, great choice, by the way. Um, so he had mentioned, apparently, there had been some major lawsuit or something recently with a larger audit firm that had to do with them actually not physically coming on site during the audit. And so that was raised as a concern because it didn't really spell out in the letter, because a lot of times, things are dot electronics, it just gets emailed back and forth. So we just wanted to confirm that they actually were physically coming on site. Now, is that just simply they're coming on once at the beginning? Or is that going to be varied times? Did you get any clarity on that?
So there would be an 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 entrance meeting um, that that would be onsite. They even proposed some of the the field work, and this is, this is more unusual now because most documents, they're uploaded to a portal online and and they do a lot uh, off-site, but they even proposed doing some of the field work onsite, um, which was good. And then finally, they would, they would present, if we, if we would like them to, they would present the uh, the final audit result to the board um, uh, as well. So they seem to have a good, a good uh, handle on that.
Perfect. And then, when we approve this, do we approve this as a not-to-exceed? Or do we just approve the contract? How does that typically work with audits? So I know we have like their total number. Is that something where if they hit the max hours they've anticipated and it's still not done, that we're going to have to get billed for more? Or is it they're gonna?
Uh, we we would, if if they look like they were going to go over that, we would come back and ask for additional funds. Because I mean, the the engagement letter that's included here is is for these specific amounts. Um, and this would, this would include the audit, I've um, the audit of the of the town and along with a single audit is what the what the total is. Um, but if it was, if it was going to be more than that, they'd have to let us know that, and we'd have to come back and ask, ask for more.
Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Teets.
Did you prepare the graph that was presented with this for the two different firms?
You mean this matrix?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. It's, I even have written here, impressive. Um, I'm a very visual person, so seeing these scores and seeing them compared next to each other. Um, the experience speaks for itself where they have done audits previously. Even if it's more hours, the experience they have in the background for the additional funds, honestly, I feel that you get what you pay for, and we're learning very quickly that auditing is just as interesting as everything else, um, as far as you get what you pay for. So, no, I'm grateful. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Trusty Wigan.
I appreciate the uh, presentation that you did, and uh, I learned a whole bunch more than I ever thought I would about auditing, but thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten? I don't have any questions.
Did I ask you already?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, any comments from the public on this? No. All right, may I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-two-three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, approving a professional services agreement with Hinkle and Company, PC, to provide independent professional auditing services to the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and resolution fifty-four, twenty-two-three is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may you please read the title of item E seven?
Resolution number fifty-five, twenty-two-three, a resolution approving a contract with Poodle, Pooter Legal Advisors LLC for legal services.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia will present.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. As reflected in the Board of Trustees packet, the firm of March Olive and Sapienza have tendered their resignation as the town attorney for Wellington. The firm has represented the town since nineteen ninety-three and has seen the town change and grow under their tutelage. The last appointment of a town attorney took place on April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, when the firm of March and Olive was appointed. The Wellington Municipal Code requires that a qualified attorney of law be appointed as town attorney at their first regular meeting after the biennial election. The town code also states that in the case of a vacancy, the Board of Trustees shall appoint a town attorney for the unexpired term. Mr. Sapienza has started a new firm, Pooter Legal Advisors LLC, and has offered to serve the town of Wellington as town attorney effective January one, twenty-twenty-four to fill the term, to fill the unexpired term left by Olive, March and Sa- March, Olive, and Sapienza. If appointed, Pooter Legal Advisors would serve until the first regular meeting in April, twenty-twenty-four or whenever the Board of Trustees is seated. I know our code says the first meeting in April, twenty-twenty-four, but we can't certify the election until ten days after and things like that. So it may not be that first meeting, but it's going to be in April. Um, the Mr. Sapienza's cost of services would remain the same as it was under March, Olive, and Sapienza. If the resolution to appoint Pooter Legal Services is approved, staff is willing to facilitate the process for Board of Trustees appointment of a town attorney, which would include going through the RFP process, um, establishing the criteria for vetting of of applications and setting up the the interviews before the Board of Trustees. And I stand for any comments or questions.
Thank you. Start with Trusty, Trusty Wigan.
I appreciate what you've done and what I've learned from you and uh, I support you.
Trusty Mason.
I just wanted to thank uh, March and Olive for uh, all of the service that they've put in for the town over the years. Uh, obviously, it's going to, you know, we'll we'll miss those guys, but I think we're in good hands with Dan for now. And uh, yeah, good luck.
Mayor Proten.
Good luck, Dan. There's a lot of historical information that's retained with March and Olive. I, what does that look like for that transition of information for the town?
There are considerable files um, of the town down in the basement and the storage of March and Olive. Um, there's also a number of digital files. So if the town appoints, Pooter Legal Advisors um, will work with March and Olive to take custody of the files that are necessary. Some of those are historic documents that don't have a lot of value. They'll make sure to transfer that information so it stays with the town.
Trusty Gator.
Yes, I was going to talk more about this in my board report, but I guess I can talk about it now. Um, I appreciate working with um, uh, some of the newer trustees, haven't really had the opportunity to work with Dan much. But I know for those of us who've been on the board, had opportunity to work with him and uh, or not Dan, Brad. We've all worked with Dan, and Dan does a great job. We've all worked with Dan, and Dan does a great job. Um, and I do appreciate, I mean, thirty-three years that, uh, March and Olive has, uh, worked with the town. And so, um, meant to talk to the mayor, I've just been so busy this week, I haven't had a chance to call you. I talked to Mr. Garcia about this yesterday, but, um, I'd like to do something, whether it's a recognition or something, maybe in the, after the first of the year. For the years of service that, uh, Brad March has served this town, I'd love to do something. Um, but, uh, I am supportive of working with Dan. Um, and then again, when the, his tradition serves, when the new board comes in, they can review, they can put out an R F P and all that. But I think Dan has, um, seen us through where we went up to, he's aware of all the things that were going on in the town right now, which we have quite a bit. Um, so I think it would be wise to continue having him work with us. And then again, the next board will make their own decision on what they wanna do, so.
Yeah, and that's a good idea, Trusty Gator.
Trusty Teets.
I wish it's Mr. March is retiring. I wish him a very happy retirement. Um, are you sure that this is the, the, the path that you want to pursue? I'm sorry, I don't, sorry, I just.
Working with the town of Wellington is, is, it, it's a blast, so I, I, I do actually really enjoy it. Um, and Brad's been a wonderful partner to work with. He is. I don't know if Brad will ever completely retire, really. Um, and so I am leaving the firm, but, um, we are continuing to collaborate on it with a number of clients. I, I'm gonna be working with Brad for, I, I assume the next decade or two, as he kinda fades off into the sunset at some point. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I, I do like working with town of Wellington. Um, I, I think after thirty-some odd years, um, putting out an R F P for services makes sense for the town. Um, I, I promise that I will put it, put in a bid at that time, so, um, but I, I think it's good for the town to, to take a look at what's out there. And, um, I, I intend to use that as an opportunity to, to change this contract a little bit, to kinda come up with some terms. And, and think about how services can be provided to town on perhaps a more, uh. Budget, budget-wise, where the town can really depend on how much that's gonna be. So, um, I, right now, we're seeing a lot of ups and downs based on, um, high seasons, so I think we can have a little more consistency. So I look forward to putting R F P with kind of a little more innovative proposal than just simply a fee for services.
Awesome. Well, with that confirmation, I am more than happy to vote for this. And welcome you back to the chaos under your brand new business.
Thank you. Yeah, March and Olive have a, quite the history with us. Um, and I'm glad you have relationships with them and we get to continue with you and then see what we decide with the new board. And, um, yeah, seems like a great idea right now and, uh, hopefully we can continue that. So thank you. Um, any comments from the public on this item? No? Okay. May I get a motion on this item?
We need to officially accept the resignation as part of the motion of March and Olive.
Ooh, uh, so we can't really. See? Eyes right now?
Resign, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay.
Okay, I just wanna make sure if I don't know if it's accepted or not. I would move that we approve resolution number fifty-five dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving the contract with Pooter Legal Advisors LLC for legal services.
Second. Any further comments? All right. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Tim, Mayor Pro Tim McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and resolution fifty-five twenty-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will go on to reports and we will start with the new town attorney.
Still the old town attorney. January first, I'm a new, a new guy. Um, no, other than a desire to delay this meeting so that I don't have to talk to Sheriff Fan, cause that kinda scares me. Um, I, uh, no further reports.
Thank you.
Or take pictures.
Right. Ms. Garcia.
So I'm gonna get, they're gonna have to indulge me for just a minute or two. We had our, had an employee, uh, we called it a, a gratitude event, um, in place of our holiday parties and things like that. And trying to be fiscally responsible, we had it here at the Leaper. We, um, had Les' barbecue and, and staff put together some really fun baskets that had snacks and things in it. And I, I read this poem to town staff and I'd like to read it for you. Um, so it'll just take a minute or two. 'Twas the day before Christmas in Wellington Town, snowflakes were falling gently to the ground. The foothills stood tall, covered in white, as residents nestled preparing for Christmas night. When suddenly there was a shout-out by the human resources master, that vehicles were stopped due to an I twenty-five snow disaster. Let's Talk Wellington was lit up all about, as people were frantically wanting to help. Jenny sprang into action to see what to do. She made the call to C dot and told them to push through. Jim was hoping the plow crew was not asleep, but the snow here was getting deep. He whistled and shouted and called them by name, now Kenny, now Dave, now Dan and Jerry, on Blade, on Adam and Richard and Terry. Get on those plow trucks and move that snow, plowway, plowway, even using that backhoe. Mike sped out to the treatment plants to tell them what to do. He is Mr. Bossy Pants and won't put up with any lookie loos. Keep those plants safe was his demand, and the team stood strong and saluted his command. Public Works Who Knows All Things was working tirelessly to get C dot to give us a ping. Demands for payment had been made all day. Why were our vendors working before Christmas Day? Finance had scrambled to get checks cut, and getting access to Cassell was a pain in the you-know-what. With a truck full of outdoor games and Billy in there too, Parks and Recreation was being busy, was busy being the ground crew. Keeping people engaged is how they were trained, and residents were smiling and did not complain. Librarians were bringing out books to share with others, and children were reading them to their sisters and brothers. The greenhouse was open to keep people warm in order to keep them safe from the snowstorm. Planning was worried someone might use the commode, as they were not sure it was up to code. Verity and Jeremy were in charge at Town Hall, keeping alert to any knock or call. Administration was sure to get updates on, on, updates on street routes, and Mahala and team did not skip the opportunity to give a staff a shout-out. We all knew that Wellington would somehow survive the snow fright, but we were all hungry and not even the T-bar was open for a bite. The residents settled in their homes as darkness fell, and the reason for working for Wellington was not a hard sell. The teams that make this town great were giving each other high fives, knowing they make a difference in the residents' lives. As the snowfalls, as the snowfall slowed and disappeared from sight, Mary, Mayor Shosse drove by and said, "Thank you to us all and to us all a good night." So Merry Christmas to you all. This is our last meeting of the year. Thank you so much for everything that you do for Wellington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff communications are in the packet. Any questions there? No? Okay. More reports. Start with Trusty Gator.
Um, really the only thing that I wanted to, um, say, I, I was gonna talk about a thing with Brad, but I think it'd be great to put something together. Again, we can work through that and put something together in January. Um, the other thing that I would ask is. We have four months to work together as a board before elections. As just a reminder, we had a conversation when we first started about we have different ideas and having differences of ideas, and we could disagree with differences of ideas. But we had agreed that we weren't going to attack the people. There has been a very clear attacking of myself by many other members of this board. You don't have to like my ideas, you don't have to like my opinions, that's why we vote. I have worked very hard to not attack people for their opinions, even though I disagree. It would be nice to see the same respect shown to myself from other members of the board. Yes, I ask hard questions. I ask hard questions to staff. I don't attack staff. I don't hate our staff. Okay, I have different concerns than the rest of you, and that's okay. What I would appreciate is the same level of respect that I try to show to each of you to be shown in reverse. Because we've recently had a trend where there's not respect coming back this direction. I have tried very hard not to fall into the making accusations and calling names. But it seems like it's been a one-way street. I'd like to see some of that respect that we all agreed to when we first started working together as a board. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Teets.
Hey, so I deferred my, deferred my last board report, cause everyone was exhausted, so mine's a little longer, but I'll make it quick. Um, the L C S O, the Hudson's Annual Lunch, um, Trusty Wigan, Patty Ethan. Um, along with Laramo County Commissioners were able to attend and have an amazing, you were missed. Um, have an amazing lunch with all of the officers and their support staff. That are just absolutely amazing. Not only does it reflect in your officers, but all of the staff in your office is just welcoming. There's, yeah, that's whatever you guys have done to breed that camaraderie. I'd love to duplicate it in so many aspects of business and town life in general. Um, so on that note, I did have a conversation with, um, Commissioner Kavallis. And we were discussing the safe route sake, safe access coming over from the east side to the west side. Of the town here and the concerns about how many runners we have going back and forth. And I'm, this is not just kids, so I'm not labeling, cause I've seen the workers go to Ridley's, so not live with Ridley's either. But, um, he said that he has possibly additional ideas and has some recommendations. And asked us to reach out, to ask me to reach out to Patty, to reach out to Ms. Farr with, um. Their office to have those continuing discussions, so I would love to have, um, the support if it's needed. To continue to explore what those options might look like. And if, uh, the community outside of our partnership is able to offer something additional, I would love to see what that would be. So if you guys would give Patty's blessing to have that meeting and continue those conversations, that would be awesome. Um, but thank you again to L C S O for feeding us all. Then the discussion of, um, Cleveland Avenue. And looking at what that project and development looks like. And the inclusion of A D A that we have in our strategic plan for intentional planning around. The people with disabilities, when we look at remodeling that area. I would love to see if it was possible to have a few members of the A D A community. Be able to have like a, a mini committee to offer feedback on what that design looks like. Um, I know I'd spoke with, uh, David Monroe with Arc of Laramo County. To see if he would be offering to help with some of that guidance and A D A. And the, the partnership, one supports our strategic plan with building those outside partnerships. But there are a lot of entities in town that would probably benefit from those kind of partnerships right now. Especially when you're looking at Grace Village and their handicap accessibility and the elevator system that they were looking at. Um, I would love to be able to have that partnership, but also have a few of our residents pair with them. To give feedback on the design of how they're moving forward with that and what works with people with disabilities.
Yeah. I mean, yes.
Does that, is that okay?
All, all in favor of, of coming up with a plan to?
Sure, um, we haven't, we haven't started in design phase yet, so how about I bring this back? When we start going through that process and we can talk about what community outreach looks like and how we include the A D A community in that outreach? How does that sound? Will that work? Okay, fabulous, thank you.
Hmm, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trusty Wigan.
Uh, we had our final meeting for the year with, uh, Laramo County Behavioral Health at, uh, Longview, uh, campus. And it just opened up, I think, December third, and they had people waiting at the door at that time. Uh, pretty amazing. I had the opportunity to tour with Realities for Children a couple of weeks prior to that. And we had a complete tour of the facility, and they gave us a partial one, since it was partially occupied when we were down there. And, uh, you know, before this opened up, uh, the, uh, people had to go to Weld County or even down to Denver. So now we got a local facility, so it's gonna be great for the county, so that's my report.
Thank you. Trusty Mason.
Um, I've got the Regional Opioid Abatement Council tomorrow, so I guess I won't have another report until January, so.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I loved your poem, Patty. Nice work. That was pretty creative.
Thank you. It was really fun. It was hard to get things to rhyme, though.
Uh, uh, did you just like wake up in the middle of the night and like have this like creative thought or?
Oh, I was hoping that I would have my son do it for me.
Oh.
And because he's a really creative writer and he failed, so I got to do it. Cause I, I, I wanted to do something, so pushed me out of my comfort zone for sure.
Uh, no, no board reports. I just thought that that was a very nice sentimental touch and.
That was.
Pretty cool. Nice work, Patty.
Um, only thing I have is, uh, the regional C dot. Online Zoom meeting, so we attended that, this first meeting of this month. Patty, Ethan, Bob and myself, and it was nice that they noticed that we were there in force. And actually introduced us as, wow, all of Wellington's here. Um, so we got our hats in the ring and we're gonna keep putting our hat in that ring. Um, so we got that done, um, and we'll continue doing that, so that was really cool. Um, other than that, I mean, working with this board, working with everybody here, um, I enjoy it. I can honestly say that I do love each and every one of you. Um, I apologize if I've ever been disrespectful to anybody here, or when I have been disrespectful, not if. Um, to each and every one of you, so bottom of my heart, I mean that. Um, I'll do better. Um, hopefully we can all do better and, uh, just come together as a group. Obviously, it's not easy being up here, it's not easy having different opinions and trying to get things done. We're all here for the same reason. We all care about this town, we all care about the people. Um, so I appreciate each and every one of you and, and thank you for all of your hard work and dedication and nights you spend away from your family. Um, and everything you, you put forward to this, cause it, it shows and it means a lot, so. Um, thank you. Thank you to town staff for all of your guys' hard work. Um, Laramo County sheriffs, you guys are wonderful, so thank you for that and for the residents here. Thank you guys for being involved, coming to these meetings and, and having your voices heard and, and making sure that voices are heard. Um, yeah, it's our last meeting of, of this, this year, so, uh, no? That's, that was canceled, yeah. It's, it was there as a, just in case. So, uh, yeah, we just wish every single one of you a Merry Christmas and, uh, Happy New Year. Yes, that'll be. Yeah. So, yeah. But yeah, that's all I got.
And I'm sorry, Merry Christmas. I'm, Merry Christmas, everybody. I felt bad. I didn't even know that we canceled the work session.
Formally canceled, but it's.
It was on retainer.
I, we're having that discussion and it hadn't been, yeah, yeah.
We'll just put a notification out. Perfect. Thank you.
Um, and then now I will adjourn our meeting, time being ten oh seven P M.